Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming or thank you for tuning in. We have a very heavy agenda this evening, so let's get started. Councilman Martin, if you'd please do the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
Sure. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for your grace and mercy. Lord, we turn to you as you instruct us in Hebrews 13:5 that you are always with us and you will never forsake us. Lord, I can't tell you the assurance that that brings to us, the peace and comfort knowing that you will never leave our side and that you will never forsake us, that you will always be with us and guiding us. Lord, I just ask for guidance and wisdom for our elected officials everywhere at the federal level, at our state level, here in Brunswick County, and of course, here in the town of Oak Island. Lord, I just ask that you watch over and protect the people of the town of Oak Island. And as always, we just want to bless our first responders, including our law enforcement and medical personnel and emergency management people. Also bless our troops, be with them. And just, Lord, we just ask for your mercy and grace, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So there are no presentations, proclamations, or recognitions this evening. So the first item of discussion is adjustment or approval and approval of the agenda. Counsel, are there any agenda changes you'd like to make? Yeah, I've got that one. Yeah.
I would like to, off the consent agenda, town personnel policy, I would like to speak on that some.
Okay. Any others, counsel? For the sake of courtesy to Mr. Kiesler of the Army Corps of Engineers, I would like to move 4.4 to 4.1 so that he can go home and have an evening. There are no objections. Do we... Does counsel have a motion?
I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Public comment. Please state your name and address before addressing counsel. It is your job to manage your three-minute time limit, so please watch the clock. I'll give you a few seconds to finish your thought that you're conveying, and after that, your microphone will stop. So just as fair warning. Who do we have? Lisa?
We have Andy Spradley.
Andy Spradley, 114 Southeast 6th Street here on Oak Island. I'm here for the Oak Island Beach Preservation. First of all, education is a big part of Oak Island Beach Preservation's mission. Each year, we award two scholarships to Brunswick County High School students. This year, Ruth Jeffries McKenzie and Kira Stigman were our recipients for these scholarships. We'd like to wish them well on their college adventure and their futures. Second, flash sweeps. Some of you may have heard of them. Would you like to help clean up the beach if you don't have a lot of time? Well, this is why it's called a flash sweep. I will send you out for five minutes to clean the beach, just five minutes, and look what we were able to accomplish in that few minutes. Someone was almost able to build another house, just in case. We would love to have people come out and help us. We announce this on our Facebook page and on our webpage. I'll tell you which access point we'll meet at, what time. Come on out. I've got the bags, I've got the gloves, I've got disinfectant, I've got all that for you, and I'll tell you how to do it. Our next sweep is on Wednesday, June 18th, at 8:00 in the morning. So you have plenty of time to get a cup of coffee in. It's because it's low tide, and that's when we try to do it, so we have more beach to clean. It will be at the East 16th Street access. And you see, even the dog came out to help us that day. And we need you, not just for keeping the beaches clean, but we need people to help us with all the activities and to be a part of Oak Island Beach Preservation. We would like to have members. We would like to have more members become board members. So please, go to our website, go to our Facebook page, you can sign up right there, and we would love to have you come and work with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lane Hurdle.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Dr. Lane Hurdle, and I live at 114 West Island Drive here on Oak Island. Thank you for giving me this time this evening. I wanted to talk with you about what I see as the urgent need for canal maintenance and possible dredging of the Little Davis Canal. Don't really look at this, doing this, as a selfish reason, but more as a holistic reason that we need to have this completed. I wrote a letter recently and sent it to, or emailed it to, the council members to emphasize the importance of maintaining the inland canal bottoms in our community, notably the Little Davis Canal, just off the Davis Canal before going into the intercoastal waterway. As a vital waterway, the canal plays a crucial role in navigation, flood prevention, environmental protection, and infrastructure integrity. Proper upkeep is essential to ensuring its long-term functionality and preserving the ecological balance of our coastal environment. These efforts bring numerous environmental benefits, including improved water quality, enhanced biodiversity, and flood prevention, which have been degraded over the years, specifically during last year's storms, from the impact of the coastal storms, of course, from last year. A lack of proper bottom maintenance hinders Oak Island's vision of preserving, protecting, and enhancing its natural and cultural environment, including shoreline access, waterways, water access, residential areas, and recreational opportunities. The Little Davis Canal is an integral part of this vision, and its upkeep is essential to fulfilling the town's commitment to conservation and accessibility. This accessibility also preserves property values. Oak Island's comprehensive and use plan, I-78, prescribes that the town will apply for grant funds for projects designed to improve or prevent further degradation of water quality in the Davis Canal, Montgomery Slough Complex, the Eastern Canal, Elizabeth River, to the Atlantic Ocean Lockwood Falls. Maintaining inland canal bottoms is crucial for several reasons: navigation accessibility, water flow and drainage, environmental protection, structural integrity, et cetera. We look at this as being crucial because both Ocean Isle and Holden Beach have plans for canal maintenance and have had it for years. Sunset Beach, this had completed their maintenance plan and dredging initially last year, March 2024. From discussions to that completion of the dredging took 12 years. So let's get the ball rolling. Thank you for your time, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mike Rabey.
How you doing, ladies and gentlemen? I'm Mike Rabey. I live at 108 Southwest 26th Street on Oak Island, off the Little Davis Canal. I want to mention that the two bulkheads on either side of Southwest 26th Street have been completed now, so I'd like to see us put the bulkhead for the end of the street on the agenda to get built. This one's, this will be the last bulkhead on the eastern side of Little Davis Canal to be done, so we'll have no more dirt sloughing into the canal. I know that we've got discussions on Little Davis Canal. I've lived on that canal for 45 years now, and when you guys start talking about it and whatnot, I would love to volunteer my time to help with the planning and whatnot going on to that canal. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, is there a way that we could possibly tie in with a document shredder company to get them to bring a truck down and for a minimum fee or a mon- fee collects documents that can go to the shredder? I've tried to take some up to different places, and they say anywhere $3, $4, $5 a pound to get rid of documents. And I know a couple of other entities around the county that do get trucks to come in and do that for their town citizens. And I'd be more than happy to pay a fee to drop my documents off. All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Carrie Lenzen.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carrie Lenzen. I'm at 340 Northeast 46th, and I'm here tonight to request that the Town of Oak Island consider the adoption of a new ordinance modeled after the 2019 Town of Hilton Head Island, South Carolina ordinance, which regulates the use of shovels and the depth of holes dug on the beach. This measure is designed to enhance beach safety for all and provide a much-needed protection to our vulnerable sea turtle population during their nesting and hatching season. The ordinance is incorporated into their beach regulation page on the Hilton Head Island website, and I'll share a copy of the document, and you all have one in your email box as well. And each year, our beach draws families, visitors, residents who cherish the natural beauty of Oak Island. However, increasingly large and deep holes, often dug with full-size metal shovels, pose a serious hazard, not only to sea turtles, but also to unsuspected beachgoers, emergency personnel, and maintenance crews. I'm enclosing a photo in your email as well that shows a hole that was dug on Sunday, June 1st, at the 46th Street access. The hole was not only enormous, it included a trench to the ocean that filled it with water. It also was finished with two full-size garden shovels buried within the hole and left overnight to be found by someone. So, you know, adds to the danger by putting the shovels in and leaving it. So obviously, the person who, or persons who dug it probably didn't own the shovels. They may have borrowed those for a short time. Hilton Head's ordinance prohibits the use of shovels on the beach unless they are made of wood and/or plastic and are less than 30 inches in length and six inches in width, and they limit their hole depth to 12 inches. These common sense limits have proven effective in supporting turtle nesting activity and minimizing dangers on the beach, all while allowing families and children to continue enjoying the sand responsibly. This type of ordinance would directly support the Town of Oak Island's new three-year strategic plan, specifically 6.2, which beach safety aligns with proactive preventative strategies to minimize emergency incidents. Enacting a similar policy would demonstrate a proactive commitment to both public safety and environmental stewardship, values that reflect the best of our coastal community. I respectfully encourage the council to review Hilton Head's approach and consider drafting a similar regulation tailored for Oak Island. I, along with many other residents and visitors, would be proud to support the initiative in any way possible. The bottom line is, garden shovels belong in the garden, as Hilton Head states in their Beach Shovels and Holes campaign. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would anybody like a printed copy? Because I brought printouts if you want them.
I'll take one.
Thank you.
Eric, can you make sure that Clark has one? Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Kiesler, you signed up, but would you rather speak during the item?
I'd like to sign up in the wrong place, perfect.
That's okay, I don't think you needed to sign up. Okay. Robert Green.
Robert Green, excuse me. I just came here to say thank you for taking the time to listen to hear. Today's world, too many people don't listen to hear, they listen to speak. You can't understand what someone else is saying if you don't listen to hear. I don't have to agree with anything you have to say, and you don't have to agree with anything I have to say, but there's one thing I do know about all of you, and that lady too. You care, and that's what makes the difference. So I want to say thank you. Good day.
Thank you very much.
That's all we have signed up.
Okay, for the sake of time, we'll move on. Counsel reports. Would you like to start?
Thank you. And for the lengthy agenda, I will skip any reports for tonight. Thank you.
Mary.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of things. Just want to remind and encourage our citizens to take advantage of the Report a Concern button that we've implemented on the town's webpage, the homepage of the webpage. If you have an issue with something that's going on in the town, whether it's a code violation or any number of things with any of our departments, if you will use the Report a Concern button, that's going to get you the quickest response that you can get. If 10,000 people call our manager every day and say, "I have a complaint," she's got to sort through all 10,000 of those complaints and get them to the right people. We have an amazing professional staff who are ready and waiting to deal with those items, and so I just encourage you to use the process that we've taken the time to set up. It'll get you a better response, it'll give the town a record of the complaint, and I think in the end, we'll all be happier. Very quickly, tomorrow night at 6:00 PM in this room, we will have the final public input session for the comprehensive plan land use update, comprehensive land use plan update, yeah, that's right. So you can come out, you can see the progress that's been made, and see how the consultants have dealt with the input that you've provided so far, and then it'll be your final chance to provide input on that plan, because Thursday morning, following tomorrow night's session at 9:00 AM, the steering committee will meet for the last time to go over all the data that we have and provide any final input to the consultants so that they can finish up our plan. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to call your attention to the back of the room where there are two displays. One is a bicycle plan survey. If you could, this QR code, if you haven't already completed it, please complete the survey. And the other one is for the recreation master plan. The sort of bicycle plan committee, of which I'm a council member of, we're going to look at, we are looking at, bicycle transportation, making it safer for bikers, but also for pedestrians and LSVs and speed limits and sidewalks and greenways. There's a lot of different things that will come out of the committee recommendation, and they'll give that back to council in conjunction with the land use plan. So a lot of good things, a lot of good input. So the more input we can get on that, I think it's really going to improve everybody's quality of life. Then secondarily is on the recreation master plan survey. If you haven't completed that, really important, right? Want to hear what everybody's, get your input, especially with the proposed recreation, new recreation center, we want to hear from everybody. And lastly, the newest addition to the Town of Oak Island is a crosswalk at Middleton and Oak Island Drive. And that was quite a surprise when I saw that last week, was not aware of that. Our dogs are very happy, so we don't have to play Frogger when we cross Middleton. So it's a welcome addition to our town, and Catherine, and thanks for your staff working with DOT to make it happen.
Yeah. I came prepared to talk about the comprehensive land use plan Wednesday and Thursday, but Terry knocked it out for me already, so you know about that. Bryce Taylor has been working on a stormwater design manual that he's going to present when it's finished to the builders and concerned citizens who want to know more about stormwater. I think that's exciting. I learned that at the Environmental Advisory Committee. At that committee, they are working on a resilient tree list to give to the citizens. So they're trying to be very proactive in how they help the town. Lastly, I know the mayor's been out there, I've been out there. We have a baseball team out at Bill Smith Park, and it's fun to go out and watch them play, and it's fun to cheer for Oak Island. That's all I have.
Very quickly, since the agenda is quite voluminous, a very interesting discussion with the mayor and the manager about the proliferation of low-speed vehicles. We've all seen it, we're all experiencing it. It feels as if it ramifies each year, year over year. And I think that what we need to do, and I will introduce legislation to this effect, form a task force of administration, council members, police, fire, all pertinent agencies to see what strategies we can develop to provide for a more efficient traffic flow and to ensure safety. And I think we need to do that now before the problem gets even worse. So with that.
Thank you. I just want to say that for the bicycle plan survey, building on Bob's comments, that you don't have to ride a bicycle in order to fill out the survey. So there's a certain number of survey takers that are required to make a statistically valid survey, so I really encourage all citizens to complete that survey, and there are opportunities to say that you don't ride. So then you'll be moved to questions about walking. So I encourage everyone to take that. And also, the recreation five-year plan is important for our community, particularly in light of the prospect of potentially developing a new rec center. And we've made some headway on that. If you're following the meetings, you know what that's all about. So the five-year recreation plan, we want to make sure that a new rec center would comport with that plan. Last, building on what Bill said, just a shout out to the community for the tremendous support for our new loggerhead baseball team. Attendance at the first game exceeded 2,500. It was quite, quite an event, and the team gets better with every out. We're a little bit behind the other teams in terms of games played, but they're a lot of fun to watch, and they're working very hard. I appreciate the host families, I appreciate the loggerheads team and their management for this opportunity, and I particularly appreciate counsel and the staff for all they've done to move this along. I think it's a great shot in the arm for morale across the island, and it couldn't be possible without a 360 community-wide support. So I thank everyone for that, and that's all I have. Next is the consent agenda. Counsel, is there a motion?
So move, Madam Mayor, as amended.
And second, is all in favor? And motion unanimously passes. Next is 1.2, consideration of amendments to the town's personnel policy. Catherine, do you want to lead that?
Sure. This is the second phase of our personnel policy revisions. The first, the attorney assisted with our moving it from our code of ordinances, and the second is to bring you all, the entire personnel policy, with recommended revisions, changes. And the intent here is to update what is a more than 10-year-old set of policies, but also to include various policies that were in multiple places. So it's a consolidated effort. So a new employee coming on board will have all of the personnel policies, they will sign off, and they will have them all together. We're also going to begin full orientation sessions for employees, so we'll be going through these policies as well. A lot of good revisions in there, there's not a lot of major changes to it, other than some of the state-required policies that you all have seen and approved in the past, they're also included in there. Again, it's a consolidation and a revision and updates.
Any questions by counsel?
If I may, Ms. Manager, on page nine, at the bottom, section five, "New positions shall be established upon recommendations of the town manager and approval of the town council." Is this new language? Because in the past, I thought the town manager just took that upon the manager's own discretion.
That is nothing new. Nothing has changed in that paragraph.
So whenever there are new hires, it will be passed before the town council, before the person is hired?
The attorney.
Yeah, I, you know, the language is, I guess, the establishment of new positions. So, you know, establish a new position usually necessitates a budget amendment or having it included in the budget, so.
Got you, got you.
Thank you.
Two or three other just clarifications, nothing contentious. On page 20, what outside work the employees can do, what is acceptable. It didn't get into specifics, as it is side jobs of roofing or cutting grass or working security at the movie theater.
That's right. Right, this is a pretty standard policy. It's awareness. We do have currently five, I think, right now that have applied for this. It's really so that there's better coordination, their department understands what they may be doing at other times, and it's an acknowledgement, and really, it's for protecting the employee as well.
But it doesn't get specifically or not limited to?
Each one is looked at separately. Yes, the request comes into HR and they evaluate it. Certainly, there's some, some safety concerns sometimes. You wouldn't want someone working a backhoe all day here and then also working a full night shift every night and recognizing what some of those challenges would be. So it's an upfront dialogue with HR and the employee.
Thank you, ma'am. Two more. Page 21, employment of relatives. It says that no relative should work in the same department, but then in point one and two, it says it should not resort in a relative supervising a relative. Is that not redundant?
So the, the reason for the change in this paragraph was to better define the word "unit." It's always been an ambiguous word, and so it could be interpreted as no employees in the same family could work in the same department, could be the same division, could have been interpreted as the town as a whole. In addition to the supervision, we wanted to clarify "unit." So "unit," we are recommending that it to be in the division, because we do have people that are related within maybe the police department. But they also cannot be direct supervisor, supervisee, even if they're within the same division. So there's two parts to that. Does that help?
And I'll forego my last one, so we're finished. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, I would like to say that Section 11 on Internet and Cyber Security is a significant improvement, and I also like Section 13 on Professional Standards for Appearance and Conduct.
Thank you.
And they sign off on that on day of hire, don't they?
They will now. They will get the entire personnel policy upfront, we're going to orient them on it, and they will sign off having read it and had the opportunity to ask questions.
Those are, those are definite improvements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Catherine? Counsel, do we have a motion? Page 21.
I'll make a motion, since I asked all the questions. I make a motion to approve the amendments to the town's personnel policy as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Two seconds. All in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you, Catherine. Let's, appreciate all of the effort that went into this. I think it's a solid step in the right direction. I appreciate all your efforts. And it's Helen's, no.
Debbie.
Debbie as well.
Big shout out to HR, and we had a personnel committee, and thanks to everybody and the department directors and the people on the committee that helped as well.
Yep, I echo that.
Thank you.
Next, committee appointments. Appointment to the- Next, committee appointments. Appointment to the Brunswick County Airport Commission. Lisa, do you have ballots at the?
I don't have it back yet.
Okay. Please sign them after completion. And thank you, John, for collecting those.
With five votes from council, Ed Burnett is reappointed to the Brunswick County Airport Commission. And also with five votes from council, Margaret Johnson is reappointed to the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Excellent. Thank you, council. Administrator of reports, Catherine?
Thank you. One of the main items on the agenda tonight, of course, is your final consideration on the budget for fiscal year '25-'26. And so I just wanted to do a quick review and highlights for you all and the public as well. First of all, let me take a moment just to, again, thank our amazing staff for all their hard work on this. You don't see a lot of the behind-the-scenes, but this committed team really embodies the public service that you would be very proud of for this town. This budget heard your concerns about the tax rate and also the concern for making sure that we are providing the very best service that we can to our citizens. And with the help of the staff, I believe this budget has accomplished that. As you know, there's no tax rate increase. There are some fee increases, but they are as minor as we could keep them to with solid waste and stormwater. Of course, the big change is move from the fire fee to the fire tax, which, again, I want to be very clear, maintains the rate-neutral, revenue-neutral position. So it is not a tax increase. It's an adjustment in the type of fee and to a tax. There are three additional firefighters for higher, higher level of service there. Because of our storm recently with PTC-8, we all got a heightened awareness to our stormwater issues on the island. So an incredible increase in level of service with four new positions to accelerate our stormwater maintenance permitting and new projects for only $3 more a month. Increase in some of the solid waste fees. The majority of our residents on the mainland will not see any increase in solid waste fees. This is primarily on the rental beachfront row area. And that is based on the number of bedrooms. Again, that is purely to make sure that we are passing through the cost that we incur for our service provider to collect trash and recycling. It does include the funding for the next phase of the recreation center. It enhances the beach safety unit, enhances our IT and cybersecurity services, facilities, and facilities assessment. And of course, this budget funds all of our beach nourishment projects. We hope that with your approval tonight and the assistance of Bob from the Corps, he'll do a better job of explaining some of the beach nourishment projects on, on the east end. But as you know, we've done the west end and we have for you tonight the proposal for moving forward on the remainder of the beach nourishment for the entire island. And funding for that is included in the budget before you tonight. Quick mention about the fire fee and tax change. I just want to be very clear because I'm sure by the time tax bills go out, we'll start getting a lot of phone calls. So we will have this up on our website for everybody. The fire fee is currently billed by the county. When it becomes a fire tax, it will be billed by the Town of Oak Island. So you will see that shift. Those are actual clips of what the county tax bill looks like and the Town of Oak Island tax bill looks like. So just a warning that that will be an adjustment. You can get your current Oak Island bill and last year's Oak Island tax bill and it will look like an increase. It is not. It will be offset by a reduction on the county side because of the, where they say Oak Island Fire up there on their bill. So we will do some good marketing messaging with Mike Emery's help and make sure we get this word out again. Just let me go through that. There was some concern about the actual numbers. I just want to maintain that rate-neutral position we've been talking about. Your ad valorem, your fire fees, fire tax, currently it's at zero. The fire tax would go up, but the fire fee would go down. Total of 17 cents. Of course, with the sand tax was 20, maintains 20. As I've been doing every month for the last several months, we're continuing to keep you maintained on the code enforcement from the Alliance report. And we are getting very, very close to completion. I've highlighted that 92% complete. Of all the cases that were in the report, 1,168, they have conducted 1,070 visits to inspect. 84% so far have already been cleared or were unfounded, 905. And 165 cases have been opened. We hope to wrap up this project in the next month or two. As was mentioned earlier already, a wonderful event coming up, June 11th, for the land use plan and the recreation center. Another opportunity for public input on that as well. Please come out right here tomorrow night. We are working on a development services stakeholder meeting for July 15th. We'll have, actually including and inviting all of our development community, landscaping, building, everyone who's been involved with some of the recent changes over the last year or so. See how we're doing. Check in with those stakeholders. And of course, get ready for Beach Day, July 1st at Middleton Park and fireworks at the pier. As you know, customer service has been a big focus of mine since I've been here almost a year now. And with Mike Emery's expertise, we have been doing a campaign to try to get everyone to be able to have access to all the information that a citizen could want. We have the OKI information, direct email and text alerts available. And we're proud to say that we're now over 10,000 subscribers on that. And the second thing that Mike helped us put together is that amazing app, the mobile app. If you haven't downloaded your OKI app, please do. That too has been wonderful. We've had a concerted effort and a marketing campaign to remind people that you can get all the information you need at your fingertips. And we have 894 downloads already. Very proud of that. Again, customer service, we're trying to reach out and make sure that we're getting the information you want to, to the citizens as directly as we can. And there are your continued ways to connect with us. As was mentioned earlier, also direct link to report a specific concern. So two-way conversations. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Question?
Sure.
Catherine, quick question if I could. We talked about last week. Is the, can you get us a quick update on the crosswalks on Beach Drive?
So they are in process. Everything has been finished. I think the items have been ordered. I'm looking for Scott. He's not in here. By the end of the month, they should begin. So install will take probably several more weeks after that. But it is, it is right on the edge of being able to be started. Great news. The one on, on Oak Island Drive, we are still working on.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Catherine? Again, I just want to commend you and the staff for, for all that you've accomplished in the last 10 months and look forward to a bright future for Oak Island. Old business, Mr. Kiesler, we're going to start with you. Consideration of approving payment for participation in the Wilmington Harbor project with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer for sand placement on the east end. Welcome, sir.
Appreciate you all letting us come up here today. I had a couple of things I wanted to talk about. We just finished the April. I had that crossing contract and the speed bump of Lockwood's Valley in the waterway, we dropped the dredge almost every year when funded. This time, material went on Oak Island, the material out of the waterway, originally we were going to pay with ours and we, our money and we did. And we gave Oak Island an opportunity to dredge some of the widener with your money and you did. And we even, there was so much sand, we dredged, we originally estimated 65,000 cubic yards. We dredged 100,000 cubic yards with some more federal dollars. But this is just a picture of the beach in January '25. And this is a picture of the same beach. And this is April 22nd of '25. The job was not done, but 100,000 yards was placed on the beach. As you know, that's a highly volatile beach location, but that is 100,000 yards just on the beach. When we get a better pool, we pulled the data and for aerial imagery, it was a cloudy, cloudy day. So when we get a better picture, Catherine, I'll send you that. So you'll have that information. What I was here for today was to talk about the Wilmington Harbor Inter-Ocean Bar contract. It was almost a year ago today that we talked about it the first time. Went through the process and were not able to get a contract awarded. But this has come back out. We had a bid open on April the 1st. Contract was awarded May 15th. As we talked over the last year, the contract was broke up into a base and options. The base includes 700,000 cubic yards that we're paying for with federal dollars, including the mobilization to get the dredge there and offered options for official 600,000 yards divided into two options for the town to consider awarding. Appreciate the help from the town to clean up and finalize some of the real estate certifications. That was done. Really appreciate the town staff and your attorney helping us there. The current contract's awarded Norfolk dredging. The total cost for the contract, if we were to award all options, is $25.3 million. With us paying the base and the federal portion, ours is almost $19 million. So the difference would be the $6.6 million to cover the two options. Just to give you a spot of what we're looking for is the speed bumps. The purpose of this contract is to get speed bumps out of the federal navigation channel in Wilmington Harbor. This is part of our sand management plan where we, every two years when funded, we dredge the beach compatible material out of the federal navigation channel and place it either on Ballhead Island or on this time, Oak Island. So you can see where the, the normal shoaling occurs. And then I got a better picture, but what you can also see on a plan to spec is where we're planning to place the material. So the red is the federal dollars covering the material and the green is the additional placement for the two options. $6.6 million is not a small sum of money and we're aware of that. That is why we pitched. We pay to get the guy there to cut your grass and while he's there, you haven't cut your yard. So we're going, we're going to pay the mobilization cost. I don't have that in front of me. I know I provided that, Catherine, but much of, at $6.6 million, you're getting sand about $10 a cubic yard with this day and age. That's a pretty good price. But any questions that you may have? The contract was awarded on the 15th of May. We have 60 to 90 days to award the option. So if we could get the money in early July, that would be great, if that's what you decide to do.
Questions for Mr. Kiesler? Thank you very much.
Thank you for being the bearer of good news.
We appreciate that.
The work has to be done between November 16th and April 30th. Norfolk dredging, we've issued our notice to proceed Monday. As soon as we get a more official schedule, we will give you that information. And then also something that we have done in the past is we'll remind you, as soon as we get the schedule, we'll develop a tracker, a GIS tracker that gives you where the sand's supposed to go and what days it's supposed to go. And we can give you that to put on your webpage and forecast. It's updated every day. So you'll know where the information is and what's happening. And also, we can give you some information on what for residents to expect with the construction. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Counsel, do we have a motion to proceed with?
I'll make a motion to approve payment of $6.6 million to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the town's portion of the Wilmington Harbor dredging project after July 1, 2025.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. That's huge. Next is consideration of holding a referendum in November for the height limit exceptions. Bob?
Yeah, if I could, to start with our town attorney, could you, would you take five minutes and walk us through this, if you could, please? Kind of where we are now, where we started at and where we are now and what's happened in the interim.
Okay. There was a local act passed several years ago that, that, and I went over this, I believe during the last meeting, and you all have a memo in your, in your packet about this, that set the standard for building heights in the Town of Oak Island. And, and what it did was it, it was 35 feet and, and there were, there were a couple of other clarifications with it. But essentially, what it set out was that if this council wants to increase or clarify that, that limit, then there has to be a referendum. Okay? So we went over this in detail at the last meeting and, or I guess it was the May, March meeting. And part of, I think, what you all did as a little way of cleanup last year was when the two towns consolidated, when Long Beach and Yopon Beach consolidated, over the years, perhaps councils had, had, had not strictly adhered to the, the words of the special act. And I believe it was last September, it was kind of, it was kind of a reset back to how it actually was when this act was, the special act was passed. And so what you all asked me to discuss at the meeting in March, and I followed up with a memorandum, was would you need a referendum to change the height limit by increasing it? And this, let's be clear, this is for properties south of the intercoastal waterway. Or would you need a referendum to clarify the height limitation? And, and in our opinion, you would need either a referendum or a new local act to accomplish that purpose.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. So the reason why we're here now is, right, so we, last year, the School of Government recommended, told us basically that all the changes that council has made over the years to chip away at the exceptions were in fact null and void. So everything is back in here. So I think we're at risk. We're exposed. We could be standing here naked when the tide goes out. And I think that the risk is significant to us that, you know, we had back in 2018, there was a great, great discussion there was a great discussion amongst the previous council about the Lucas Cove couplet, that since it wasn't built for human occupancy, that was an exception that was allowed, the reaction from town councillors, oh no, we can't let that happen again. So they removed it, they went back to the planning director, and that was removed. So that's all back in. So right now, if I could, just a quick summary of what is allowed. So spires, belfries, copulas, antennas, water tanks, ventilators, chimneys, and other appurtenances, such as HVAC units. And we found out that the Ocean Crest Hotel, the 12-foot elevator cab above the top of the 41-foot, is in fact an appurtenance. So I'd like for us to have a discussion or make a motion that the exceptions be removed. So we go back to just 35 feet and 45 feet in a flood zone, removing exceptions. It's crystal clear then, there's no question for anybody, for builder, developer, homeowner, that by exceeding building height by adding something to it, or is it strictly a limitation for 35 and 41 feet? Our ordinances have been used against us in the past, right? So we've had opposing council come in here on three different times and tell us that he is valid in his request because it's stated in our ordinance. So all I'm asking at this point is, we clean up the ordinance, remove the exceptions, and just get to 35, leave it at 35 feet and 41 feet, so.
Before we discuss further, does council have a motion? For 4.1?
Oh, okay. So I would like to make a motion that we add a referendum in November to limit building height in Oak Island for 35, 35 feet for non-flood zone and 41 feet for flood zone without any exceptions.
Counsel, discussion?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, second?
For the purposes of discussion, I'll second the motion.
Discussion, thank you for that reminder.
If I may, Ms. Attorney, if I could ask you a couple of questions. Throughout the language, it says increase or clarify. You have an understanding as to how come it does not say increase or decrease or clarify?
This, let me, let me just, my computer suddenly shut down, and so now I'm needing to kind of look at this paperwork. But I want to, I believe it goes back to that local act, so let me look really quickly at that. Yeah, when you, in the local act, which is, you know, the special law 2006-60, when you see the enactment section down below, it says the height limitation may be increased within the town. Okay, so it doesn't say decrease, it only says increase or clarify.
And what is your interpretation of the term clarify?
Well, that's the question.
Okay, so what I'm asking you then, if it is not specifically stated, does that mean by default that spires and antennas and the likes are acceptable?
Well, no, the spires, belfries, copulas, antennas, water tanks, the ones that Councilman Chula just went through, those were also by special act listed as the exceptions, okay? So those are definitively the exceptions, because those were, those were kind of brought in by the two towns that formed Oak Island, so.
So what this referendum would be attempting to do is set aside those exceptions?
If you all directed me to move forward with this, I would have to clearly state your intention. If you wanted those exceptions to remain, you would have to tell me. If you wanted those to go away by, you know, referendum, we would make sure we included in the referendum a clarification about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Catherine, do you or staff have a position on this?
I think that I would make sure that we are consistent with what the steering committee is working on in the update to the comprehensive land use plan. I would just suggest we make sure we take that into consideration as you move forward.
So we haven't expressed whether this applies to commercial and residential or just residential. Is there thoughts from counsel on that? To remove the appurtenances, does it apply to both, one or the other?
My motion was for both. It was not to segregate commercial or residential, it's just, because that's the way our ordinance is written currently, and there's no delineation between, I'm sorry, I got a frog in my throat, there's no delineation between commercial and residential.
As I sit ex officio on the land use plan, I want to caution counsel for having it apply to, across the board, to commercial. That will limit our ability to invite the type of commercial development that we seek, and we need commercial development in order to keep our tax rate neutral, or as close to neutral as possible. We've got to expand our revenue. So that's just an awareness that I wanted to provide. It's your decision ultimately.
I would agree that discussions like this do not encourage commercial development, it actually discourages it. And then if you want to start talking about residential, first of all, I don't think I've seen a residential house in Oak Island that has HVAC on the roof. I'm not sure why you would want to put it up there, might be hard for the maintenance people to get to it. But when people ask me why parcel owners are asking for de-annexation, it's because we're having conversations like this. We're discouraging developers to participate in our tourism and economy and growing our land use plan. We have a land use plan, it grants property owners the right to develop property according to the land use plan. Conversations like this only discourage that activity. So I think you already know where my vote lies on this already. I won't say anymore.
Anyone else?
This question was asked, it was answered the first time. And I agree with you, Mayor, I think it would be unnecessary and perhaps might create a chilling effect on commercial development that we absolutely need to expand our tax base. As good as this budget is, and I think it's a testament to a lot of things, staff, good fortune, continued growth, but we know extrapolating going forward without an expanded tax base, this does not work. So I'm unwilling to tinker with this, and I don't see a need to do it. So I'm a no as well.
Keep in mind that if we enact the land use plan as is, where we have identified the two business districts, the CB districts in the downtown area, and since we can't go laterally, the only place to go is up, especially in order to allow access to parking that the businesses would take advantage of. So we may well need a referendum, although this is not a proposal for the referendum. I think that, or is it? Yes, that's all part of the same. We may have to do a referendum anyway, but we have until September 1st to submit that referendum, unless we want to delay that determination, in which case it would be very costly for us to do a separate referendum out of sync with the normal Board of Elections schedule. But we've got two more months to have that conversation. So we have a motion. Lisa, would you want to represent or tell us, clarify what the motion is?
Like, if I may, I'd like to just share a couple more thoughts. So I think about, I think about your comment, and I am as much of a proponent as anybody sitting up here about increasing our commercial tax base. And if we have to, if the decision is made to potentially raise by the land use plan to recommend that they allow an additional story to be built in the commercial district, it's certainly a fraught discussion. The issue, my concern, is the buffer between our commercial business and our residential section is typically a fence. So by increasing the ability of businesses to raise the height by six or eight feet or 10 feet, whatever the amount comes in at, you know, that is going to be, have a significant impact on the adjacent residential properties, significant impact. So I'd like, ask us to keep that in mind as well, and then kind of see where it goes.
Since that's not the topic of discussion for tonight, I just wanted to create that awareness, that it's something that we need to consider going forward. So.
If we were to, if I modified my motion to make it apply simply to residential properties at this point, I'd be willing to do that if council members in agreement that that's to be considered. My concern is that when there are exceptions, whenever you have an exception, somebody's going to find a way to get around it, and the copula is an exception, and that was a threatened lawsuit, and this board, this council reacted by stripping that out. So I'm not sure what's changed from 2018, where that council at that point said, strip that out along with other things, and now we're saying, everything is okay to put all the stuff back in that was there initially with the local act. So I'm somewhat perplexed at that.
Comment from counsel?
Yeah, I am as well. I mean, I remember that, and there was one councillor who was very upset about it, and I'm just curious what the, you know, what the change has been.
Any further comment before we get a clarification of the motion and vote?
The motion was to call for a referendum in November to limit building height to 35 feet outside the flood zone, 41 feet in the flood zone, and not to allow any exceptions.
All for that motion? Two against? Three.
I'd like to make a motion while we're still on this topic. I'd like to ask the town clerk to clarify the motion that we will not bring this back to an agenda for discussion for 180 days. This is the third time in less than a year that this topic has appeared on an agenda after it failed 3 to 2 in September. And so I'd like to make a motion that this topic not appear again for 180 days on an agenda, and I believe the town clerk has the exact language and any references to that motion.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So what is it we're saying can't come back? The appurtenances?
Right. There's a specific topic of height limit exceptions via referendum.
Okay, because we do need to deal with height before September 1st.
Yes, and I agree.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I think we need to have a conversation about the commercial district and how we can improve not only commercial development, but we've got issues with right-of-way, parking, and alleyways, and so all of that can be brought up under a separate agenda.
Okay, so that's not what you're talking about. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
So the language, the actual name of the motion would be a motion to prevent reintroduction for six months.
So moved.
There a second?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Counsel?
Sure, I'll take a stab. So point of clarification, if I can, Councilman Martin, in November, there was no vote about appurtenances. Appurtenances came up in a discussion three months ago, and that was the end with the Ocean Crest Hotel. There was no motion, though, to remove appurtenances from this code, the ordinance. There was absolutely no discussion, A, and B, you're not going to be here 180 days from now. So to try and lock a future council into blocking this, that is absolutely, that's not, that's not appropriate.
The discussion was in September, not November. We did vote on the local act that does dictate these texts, and the vote was 3 to 2, and it included in the motion, no referendum, and it passed 3 to 2. We can go back to the minute meetings if you'd like, but it said, no referendum by this council. And then I like how you assume that I'm not going to be here in six months. No, that's cra, come on, really? I'm glad the public got a chance to hear that. That's not the point of whether I'm here or not here in six months, right? Many of us may not be here in six months. You have no idea what the future holds or what lies in store for us. So this is just being professional and respectful to stop bringing this topic to an agenda repeatedly when there is no general consensus. There was a vote 3 to 2 again tonight. You can bring this back next month. The vote's going to be 3 to 2. Why are we continuing to belabor this 3 to 2 motion, and you keep bringing it back? That's my point of with, of being able to block it for 180 days for six months, because that is a legal motion that we can make. So the motion's been made, it was seconded by Councilmember Bach. I'd like to call for a vote.
Counsel, all in favor? Opposed? 3-2.
Mayor, I'd like to ask the town clerk if I'm reading this correctly. So motion 19 to prevent reintroduction for six months. The motion requires for adoption a vote equal to 2/3 of the actual membership of the council, so I think that means we need to have four vote in favor.
I agree. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So it did not pass, 3-2 vote, but it did not pass by two fellows. Thank you, counsel, that's a tough one.
I would like to make a comment. Since we're on this, and it looks like we're going to be on it every month, I voted no because this seems to be an end run to stop the 41-foot height. Every vote I take is not what somebody else wants or what somebody else thinks I should do. Every vote I've ever taken is, what do I think is in the best interest of all the people in Oak Island? If we were to vote for what we just had presented to us, that means a 41-foot high building would end up being a 35 or 36-foot high building. Common sense, due diligence, fairness to everybody could have presented 41-foot high, no more than 15% of the roof can then have the appurtenances, 15 or 20% of the roof, and that's fair to everybody. But taking a 41-foot building down to 35 feet is an end run, so if we voted every month, I'll vote no every month on that.
Mayor, I'd like to comment as well, since we're all commenting on our position on it. 41 feet in the VE zone, we all understand where the VE zone is and why we allow 41 feet, because they are at a risk of flood. I don't think there's any intention by anybody to take away the 41 feet in the VE zone. My opposition is to, is by allowing developers, builders, contractors to build at the 41-foot height and then take liberty and add 10 or 12 more feet on by putting on some other other. appurtenance that supersedes that 41 feet. I have no intention of changing the 41 feet where it's allowed, but I do have an issue with developers who push that and add something else additional on top of it.
Any other comments before we move on?
Well, you know, the obvious one. Rather than stay in a doom, doom loop on this issue, maybe there is a way we can get a consensus and move forward, all right? And Councilman Kraft offered an idea. I mean, I think we need to think about it. But this proposal has come up repeatedly and does not enjoy the support of the majority. Perhaps another proposal will enjoy that support. But tonight's not the night, and repeating it over and over again is frustrating. As Councilman Chulow mentioned, it is frustrating.
So if I could piggyback on Councilman Carter's question earlier, Councilman Bach, in 2019, and I watched the video of the town council meeting three times, you instructed our planning director to remove all exceptions because of the Coppola. And to Councilman Carter's, like, what's changed that you want to remove everything then, and now it's okay to have everything back in? And I'm not, I'm not looking for an answer. That's why it's frustrating. So I'm not sure what's changed. Somebody shifted the rules. But I mean, I just, I cannot, that is a head scratcher, which I cannot wrap my hands around.
With all due respect, I think we'll just leave the issue where it's, where it resides because there's a whole context to the conversation in 2018. And it does involve a builder and it involve, involve previous planning directors. And I'm not going to go back. It is what it is.
Okay.
And we are in the situation we're in. And either you want to find a remedy or you don't because this is a doom loop. It's not going to change.
So we're going to move on for the sake of time. Proposed text amendment to Section 26.1 of the Code of Ordinances, Construction, or Other Improvements Within Streets Right-of-Way. Matt, do you want to present this, or do you want me to just take it for what's written?
This is a council member requested item. So I would let the council member address it, and Matt's here to answer any questions that you might have.
Bill, this is yours. Do you want to introduce it?
What I thought we had voted on a month ago was the age-old question of if the person on to the left of your house has gravel in their right-of-way, how come the person to the right cannot have gravel in their right-of-way? And last month, we came close to resolving it. I think four of us wanted to go forward on that, and then we decided to not jump hastily. Let's sit on it for a little while and see where it goes. Well, we've sat on it for a little while. And my quandary with God Bless America is little kids still can't have a basketball goal on the edge of their driveway because the Oak Island Town Council has yet to get around to making that happen. Tonight, we can make it happen. The town planner showed us a month ago, no, don't just put gigantic boulders and bricks in the right-of-way. There has to be a certain level of gravel put in the right-of-way. They have to come to the town hall, ask for a permit, be told exactly what they can get. And if they comply with that, I see no reason why 100% of the town can't have what the person to the left has. So I, my motion was what the town planner had proposed last time, follow that exact language and make a vote on it and get it resolved. And I can make a motion in that regard if we need to.
Let Terry weigh in, she's your partner on this.
Terry and I got together and talked about it, and we're in agreement that we wanted to do it as a joint motion. And hopefully, I didn't say everything you planned on saying, but please jump in and back me up if you can.
We're all good. Matt had presented, counsel, with proposed language. I believe he showed that to us in March, and we did talk about it last month. As thorough as the document was, and he did give us some options for how we might deal with what you might call grandfathering or dealing with existing situations. I think the big question that we need to discuss and, and talk about is what do we do going forward? So does Matt's recommendation, is that, is that going to work for what we want to achieve? But the bigger thing is, what do we do with all the situations where folks did not go about putting improvements in the right-of-way the correct way? I've been contacted by citizens who said, hey, I went and got a permit, I did what I was supposed to, I paid the money. Please don't let those who didn't do that be grandfathered in and just say, well, it's okay, you didn't do it the right way, but we're going to give you a free pass. And I think that's one of the things we need to figure out amongst ourselves is how we're going to deal with all the existing situations that we have. Matt gave us some suggestions. We can, we can give them a year to clean it up. You know, at the very least, I would suggest that everybody has to pay that, that permit fee that they didn't pay in the beginning. So I think that's probably the bigger topic for discussion is, is, you know, when I talked to the manager about it last week and realizing that trying to go back and catch up everybody who did this the incorrect way is a huge undertaking, it's probably the only fair way to do it. But she did suggest that we have the benefit of GIS maps. And so somebody says, well, when did they, when did they put that in? We do have maps that we can look at and say, that went in two years ago, that went in three years ago. So I think, I hope that we can come to some, you know, some agreement on how to, to deal with this and allow the kids to play basketball in addition to, you know, other things.
I, I think we can. My concern is, is the concern you've just expressed. I share it. I said it last time, I'll say it again. This, this is one piece of a much larger problem, right? So kids can play, people, if they follow the appropriate procedure, can have gravel in front of their house and it's public. I get all that. That's not the issue for me. The issue is, what are we going to do with the numerous violations which have existed historically for a long time? So there's forgiveness, there's full enforcement, and then there's a sub-question, right? How long's the period of abatement? How does one abate, right? And we've not discussed that. So I'm, I'm all for kids playing. That's, the issue is up here, and we have not been able to resolve it. Lisa was kind enough to give us the, I think it's 2019 policy direction from council. And you can see where that council stalled, right? Said access, safety, obstruction, you know, degradation of value of property. So it had a very limited set. If we're talking about any code violation going all the way back, it's a staggering project. So I'm, I'm joining the discussion. So where do you want to go, right? So what is their recommendation? Because that will take potentially all of our manpower. Even then, it might not be enough, and will take a period of time, right?
I think, I think I heard a 12-month period.
I think in Matt's original proposed language, you had given us a couple of options, and one was a one-year period to come into compliance. The other, the other thing I mentioned to the, to the town manager, and I would certainly follow the, the guidance of the attorney, is we were talking about potentially calling anybody who wasn't in compliance a legal nonconformity. And I'm like, I'm not sure we can call that a legal nonconformity because that means something that was legal, but because zoning or some other ordinance changed, they fell into a nonconforming state. These folks who didn't go about the process the right way were never legal. So I don't know how they can become legal, legal nonconforming if they were never legal to begin with.
Two comments. One is, you have options at your desk for row discussion that I think, Matt, was this you that laid this out for us?
Just me.
Those are all possible considerations. The other is, when we talk about the row, we have to also consider street ends. So this just isn't, is, this just isn't about parking, parallel parking on the streets. We have to be specific about what it is we mean because there's a lot of work to be done on street ends as well. And I don't know that we're prepared to tackle that immediately.
So let me, let me ask a question of Matt, maybe this will clarify a little bit. So the recent external survey that we had, the scan, do you consider that a baseline for violations? Because we've, we've addressed most of those.
And a, a large group of those were, were right-of-way violations. Now, we couldn't, at this council's direction, we have been asked not to pursue those going forward, but they were flagged that way. So we do have a, a good survey baseline. And in addition, anything that wasn't picked up by that alliance survey, my staff's been, been documenting when they find a, a potential right-of-way violation as well. So we do have a, a good starting baseline list to, to work off of, yes, sir.
So per Councilwoman Carter's question, there may be a number of people who are still in violation, they weren't detected, they weren't scanned, but we're fairly confident we have a baseline that's not going to overwhelm our management team and, and code enforcement for the next five years. So that's encouraging. You are asserting that's a reliable, right?
Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely. Once again, we, we've surveyed, we've inspected 92% of them now.
If that's the case, and we get a 12, agreement on a 12-month abatement period, right? And so we can identify those people not detected, if you will, cited in the original pass-through, it's doable, right? It makes the problem doable. And I do agree with the mayor. Ironically, the previous council, which I was on, the major issue was the street ends, right? Especially along the ICW, and that was never completely rectified.
So I have an additional comment about that because I did ask the manager in, in our agenda review meetings, I looked at her and I said, so when are we going to start enforcing the private use of the town's street ends? And she said, when council gives us direction to do that. Because there was a policy put in place, and apparently people got upset and called town hall, and through a friendship network, the town was told to stop enforcing street ends. And I would like to ask tonight that we find agreement on enforcing street ends. I spent an hour and 20 minutes, I rode this entire island, there are violations on 37 street ends on this island where there are trailers, boats, cars, trucks, everything you can imagine parked. And I would like to reclaim those areas for our residents who say they no longer feel comfortable walking down to the waterway because people have their private property in the town's right-of-way.
So I mean, I agree with that completely. And I think part of the problem, in all fairness to the previous administration, they didn't have the, the manpower wasn't in place. And then the zeal to do it got diverted into other things. I'll put a more charitable light on it. But if we have a baseline that we agree is accurate, and if, you know, we have data from observational data, anecdotal data, and we can identify the remaining, right? We have a 12-month abatement period, we all agree to that, we now have additional code enforcement. I can support that. That's very doable.
What, what I'd like to jump in and say, if it were to come to our attention that 250 houses have not paid property tax for the last seven years, none of us would want to hear, oh, it would take too much manpower to go after 250 houses that have never paid taxes. We try to make things complicated instead of trying to figure out a way to say yes. We can try very hard to figure out a way to say no, or we could try very hard to figure out a way to say yes. What I'm hearing everybody say now is, a 12-month abatement period, you get it cleaned up. If you didn't pay in the past, get down to downstairs and pay in the next six, eight, 10 months. Matt has ironed out what kind of gravel is acceptable when, when they come in to pay for their sin. They will be told what kind of gravel is acceptable. If you have the right kind, woo, pay your, your permit fee. If you don't have the right kind, get rid of it and bring the right type in. It's not complicated. We can say yes instead of trying to figure out, well, but there's 17 other situations that might pop up. When they pop up, we're going to deal with them. But right now, let's quit looking for ways to say no. Let's get it done.
So Matt, if, if a homeowner put, put gravel at the end of both sides of their driveway 40 years ago, I'm sorry, take it back. Your GIS maps, do they show when that gravel was laid down?
Yes, maps take aerial photography about every four to five years or so. So we have a pretty good baseline. It goes back to, I have some date, some clear aerial photography dating back to the 80s, I believe. I think the last really clear one was 89. So we can take a pretty good, you know, snapshot of, of when things happened in the town. In addition, you know, anyone coming in, it's an affirmative defense, right? So if you can prove to me when it was put in, or, you know, if you have pictures or something of that effect showing, you know, that when it was installed or what it looked like and a, and a date that it was installed, then we could take a look at that internally. And we do that for anybody who comes in.
So in 89, to the best of your recollection, did we have the same restriction we have right now with respect to anybody who wants to do that has to come down to town hall, pay a permit fee, and follow the guidelines?
I'm not that familiar with the ordinances back then. I mean, it was two towns, too. But I can, I'd be happy to look into those ordinances and see what was in place.
Here's my concern. So I have probably spoken to 25 elderly residents of Oak Island who, at 70, 80, 90 years old, we're going to ask them to march down here to get a permit and possibly have gravel removed at the end of their driveway when it's been there for 40 years, or 30 years, or 25 years. And I think that, personally think that's an inconvenience that we do not want to implement and put on the shoulders of our, the residents of Oak Island.
But what do we say then to the folks who have done it the correct way? You know, you paid your fee, you got your permit, but you shouldn't have really done that. You should have just done what you wanted to do because we're letting everybody else do what they wanted to do.
And there are always exceptions. So exceptions are allowed. The other thing I encourage counsel to consider is what is allowed to park there? Can you park your boat and your trailer on the side of the street? So those are things that I think.
That's already spelled out, isn't it?
Not trying to complicate it, but I think these are considerations, the street ends and the, what can be parked on the side of the street in a gravel parking space, I think, are something that we need to consider in a change in ordinance.
Legal on-street parking of a self-propelled motor vehicle does not constitute an obstruction. So the, what staff would have to do is go out and see, you know, a trailer's not self-propelled. And that's in our current ordinance, that's defined now. So we could certainly pursue trailers and things like that. If it's a, you know, if it's a vehicle that has current tags and runs and meets all of our parking ordinances, you know, we allow 72-hour parking on certain portions of the island. That would be a police matter to enforce the parking ordinance in that instance. But things like trailers, you know, things that aren't self-propelled, we could consider those an obstruction and, and deal with those. Yes, ma'am.
Right, I, right, just to clarify, what you're saying is, we're not changing the right-of-way parking ordinance, it's simply the improvement in the right-of-way.
That's correct.
So all of these people that have put gravel down, if they didn't come in and get a permit for that, they need to come in, we'll give them 12 months to do it, and then we'll start, like, enforcing it.
Code enforcement.
Yeah, code enforcement. So 12 months, come in, you know, true up. I'm assuming we're just asking for the permit fee. There won't be any violation fees added to that or anything. I'm okay with just permit fee only.
Gotcha.
If they come in during the abatement period, yeah, we wouldn't show a violation fee.
But back to the larger point, that's, that's all well and good in that hopefully we can be sensitive to those who have had gravel down for a long time and aren't in compliance, and I understand Councilman Chulow's concern. The major issue is safety, violations, private, privatization of street ends, denial of access to the beach and the ICW. That needs to be fixed. Per your point, Councilwoman Carter, we need to get serious about it. We've got a lot of code enforcement people, they aren't in your baseline scan, right? So we missed them, we need to find them, and we need to eradicate that, especially safety things. I mean, we just have to do better with that.
And I, you know, I, I certainly would, could agree to the 12-month period that we've talked about and that, you know, we, we all seem to agree on. about and that, you know, we all seem to agree on. In terms of the street ends, though, folks don't need a year to move those trailers. Folks ought to get a letter.
I'll say that.
Next business day, because what they're not doing is they're not putting them in their yards like the rest of us are, you know? So, I'm like, I'm ready to go find a street end so my boat trailer doesn't have to sit in my yard.
Yeah, and I mean, last month, I said I was going to reach out to some other jurisdictions, and I talked with our neighbors in Southport, who just recently went through a similar problem. And they're focusing first on the obstruction, so the things, not ground-level improvements. So, they're starting off with the things that actually stick out of the ground, fences, poles, trailers that aren't, you know, self-propelled vehicles, things like that is where they're starting out. And then, you know, going to work on the, you know, things like gravel, et cetera. So, even if you wanted to, you know, split abatements or something like that, that's totally doable as well, it's not a problem at all. They did say that they put in a six-month abatement period, but they have a much smaller, they're dealing with a much smaller scale than we are here. And their six-month hadn't run out yet, so they told me to call back in July and see how things were going when their abatement period ran out, so.
So, I apologize to council and the public because I allowed the discussion to go forward without a motion on the table. So, I do want, if there are other, no other questions of Matt, then I want to get this back to Bill so he can make his motion.
So, Matt, go back to 1989, or 99, or 2009, was our ordinance that we have today in place back in 99, or 2009, or 89, to the best, your recollection?
To the best of my knowledge, it's probably very different, but I can't say for sure.
So, when do we put the, what we have currently, which is the permit fee, come down here, find out what you could put down, when was that implemented?
So, this ordinance that's in front of you was adopted in 2001, but that might have been with the merger of the towns. And it was updated in 2004, 2017, and then 2023, so it's been amended a few times. I'd be happy to come back to you with a history if you'd like something like that, but I just don't know, it was two different towns, and I'm not familiar enough with the right-of-way rules from that far back to speak on it intelligently.
But you feel sure that we've had some version of this, no improvements in the right-of-way without?
Yeah, this ordinance started in 2001, yes, ma'am.
So, this is, and I understand what you're talking about, Mr. Chulo, but I think it's important to recognize that in 2001, this was a very different community. It was not at all as built out as it is now. So, I think sometimes it's, we find ourselves looking back when I think in this case, we need to be looking forward to where we are today and what kind of community that we have today, and what we want the ordinance to be going forward. That's just two cents, but I want to get this back to you, Bill.
Matt, thank you, sir, for your tolerance. I ask you first, if I were to make a motion, meeting board, to make improvements to the street right-of-way gravel, as you proposed two months ago, as well as give a solution and a ordinance for closing up street end enforcements?
This ordinance change would not require a planning order recommendation. You don't have to.
I'd just like to direct the staff, then, to do that.
Yeah, I mean, the other alternative, if council is comfortable with what's been presented to them, would be to make a motion to approve and amend subsection G to a 12-month abatement period for ground-level improvements. If council wants to go ahead and tackle abatements on the adoption, or obstructions on the adoption of ordinance, we'll get started on it.
I want to add into that motion that accepting the baseline for violations and correcting those, for right-of-way improvement violations, there's a 12-month abatement period, a fine will relieve the party of any further obligation. But for safety or obstruction violations, right, they're going to be identified aggressively, and we're going to notice them, and they're going to have six months to abate. It's a complete motion. So, that solves your basketball hoop problem in gravel, but we get on to the big item, right, which is ballards, trees, picnic table, whatever, in the street ends, that has to stop.
So, if we, just as a suggestion, if we limited this to places and streets, then that eliminates street ends and allows us to work forward on street ends.
We have to get that in there.
Yeah, this subsection 26-1 deals with construction or other improvements within any town street right-of-way, so it automatically deals with street ends. Once this approved, anything that's in the street end would have to meet the requirements of this ordinance or any other ordinance that deals with obstructions.
My point is, I don't think we should be allowing people to put down gravel in parking their boats or anything else in the street ends. I think we need to clean up the street ends and give that back to the public because it historically is, public access to the water is a founding principle of Oak Island.
And were you saying that the ordinance as written also includes street ends, not just the right-of-way in front of people's houses? So, it would be covered, we would cover everything we've talked about that we're concerned about if we go?
But I think what the mayor's getting at is not allowing, like, a gravel parking pad in the street end, is that correct?
Correct. So, if we limit it to row, then it includes street ends. If we exclude, if we limit it to places and streets?
You could, you could add an exclusion to subsection four of this for, you know, street ends that end at the ICW or Davis Canal or something like that.
I think that would contradict our ordinance that allows a property owner in partnership with the town to make improvements to the street end, i.e., they put gravel down, or they could even pave it, is my understanding, when they have a side-load driveway on a corner lot. So, we have to be, I think we, we might be pushing the boundary too far tonight if we could just tackle the right-of-way improvement. We already have a right-of-way parking ordinance that we can enforce, then we might want to reconsider exceptions to how we improve street ends for property owners who partner with us, and that's a 50-50 partnership, is my understanding, is that correct, Matt? Like, they pay half and we pay half to improve the street end for access to the property?
That usually runs through Public Works, I'm not sure how that program works necessarily, but I can say we do have many people that put a driveway off of the street end for that side access. It is a public right-of-way, and public right-of-way does need to be maintained for access.
So, back to the central point, for right-of-way improvement in the ordinance, there's a 12-month abatement period, right? But we're clear on that, we all agree on that, I think, you know? For additional obstructions not yet included in the baseline survey, they will be prioritized, they will have six months of abatement time, and we will enforce obstruction and safety violations, be they in the street end or the right-of, wherever they are, we're going to find them and eliminate them.
Yes, sir.
And to put gravel in the right-of-way, that has to be permitted?
Yes, that's the improvement.
Right.
That's the easy part.
The first part of the motion, though, is to adopt the text amendments to section 26-1, "Construction or Other Improvements Within Street Rightaways." Just want to make sure we're clear on that, that's our motion, and then we've got John's added text around abatement and fines or the permitting collection.
Yes, but it's not clear to me, if I can ask a question. So, in G, the first sentence says that existing permanent improvements in the right-of-way shall be treated as legal nonconformities, but we're saying, no, we're going to have a 12-month abatement period?
Yes.
Okay, I just want that stayed on the record.
I think that's fair.
I do, too.
Yes, I think we're all nodding our heads.
I don't think we want to make all these people legal nonconforming, we're going to avoid that.
Right.
Matt, one more question, if I could. So, how can you determine, how far do your records go back for permitting?
Well, for permitting, we retain permit documents for seven years.
Okay, so, somebody gets a letter, that abatement letter, and because they're not, they violating the ordinance, and they go, "Wait a second, I've been here for 20 years, 20 years ago, I got a permit to put down gravel." I mean, how do we, how do we validate that?
Well, they would have to present the town with a permit, or with any evidence they have that that improvement was made, at the date that they're saying, you know, correspondence, anything like that would work for us.
So, I think of unintended consequences. So, we're going to tell the residents of Oak Island, many of them elderly, that if they don't have a paper trail from 10 or 15 or 20 years ago to show they had a permit, because our record-keeping requirements don't keep it for perpetuity, then, too bad.
They come get a permit, and they make arrangements to bring it into compliance.
If they've already had a permit, let's say they got a permit 15 or 20 years ago, we can't show that because we don't have the permits, we keep a seven-year paper trail of permits.
Is the rest of it electronic, Matt? Or there are just no records?
They're destroyed after seven years, seven years is the record retention on permitting documents.
Is the permit fee $100?
A driveway permit fee, I believe, yes, sir, is $100, which is what we would classify something like this as, as a driveway permit.
So, for this, would council be allowed to consider a different permit fee for the abatement period?
You'd have to amend the fee schedule in some way to add that new permit type on there and the new fee on it. Another route that, not to complicate this too much, but it, there's opportunities for appeal, of course, if someone gets a determination, they can appeal that determination typically to the Board of Adjustment for something like that.
So, Lisa, do we have a motion?
Well, I'd like for Matt to try to say what the language would be for the new subsection G, because I think I'm not.
I think it would be something to the effect of, upon adoption of this ordinance, ground-level right-of-way improvements, you know, shall have a 12-month abatement period, obstructions or other right-of-way violations shall have a six-month abatement period, and tie it to the date of the adoption of the ordinance, so that we've got a clear date, we know when it is, we know when that time.
Does that wording exclude the street ends?
No, it does not exclude the street ends.
I think that's important.
Can we get the, an add-on sentence, a run-on sentence, and get street ends?
It includes street ends.
I'm having trouble hearing exactly what the words are that are going to be in this ordinance change.
What page is that, Matt?
Well, I mean, I have, I have, I have G right here, is that what, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, Lisa was asking about G.
Yeah.
Because, because I have a comment about G, if that's something that's going to be adopted.
Well, they're talking about amending G to include a 12-month abatement period from the date of the adoption of the ordinance for ground-level improvements and for obstructions and other right-of-way violations, a six-month.
Right, okay, so, going forward with G, but allowing that year of, to get it in compliance. I guess my question was, and I think Councilwoman Carter brought it up, I don't think we need the word "legal" for nonconformities.
G would be replaced in entirety, in this.
So, we can try to group right here, or we can send this to staff to come back with recommendations that meet all of the parameters that have been stated by each of you.
No, I don't want to delay it another month, I think we're close enough that Mr. Bach is a great wordsmith, I would, you know, I think he can.
Well, it's Mr. Kraft's motion, but with your permission.
Please, take it and run.
So, what we seem to be lacking is another sentence that obstructions and slash safety violations will be identified and abated within six months.
That would be the new G with mass language.
Right.
And all of this G would go away.
Yes.
Sir.
No exceptions for street ends?
No exceptions. Any obstruction, any safety violation, whether it's a street end or right-of-way, will be identified and dealt with, you have six months.
And they can put gravel?
They can, they can lovely get gravel with the earlier part, following the permit process.
I second the motion.
And just, I just like to point out that the reference to the vehicles in the street ends, I'm not sure that this section is the right section, in fact, it may be somewhere else in the code. I mean, this section is "Construction or Other Improvements Within Street Right-of-Way." It seems to me that, Matt, is there somewhere else in the code that deals with enforcement of street ends?
If you're talking about vehicles, or?
Or abandoned vehicles, or?
Yes, obstructions in the right-of-way.
Somewhere else, that's really referenced, not here.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a need to even have, is there even a need to even amend this in a way to talk about these vehicles and the street ends, or is there another part, like, under part?
Start enforcing what we have.
Right, our right-of-way parking.
I think the question would be, do we want to put a clock, we've had a pause at council's direction on enforcing right-of-way, any right-of-way violation, so do we want to have a time clock to contact property owners and give them opportunity to come into compliance before we start?
Okay, referencing the other part of the code, okay.
Yes, separate from the motion on 26-1.
Yes.
Keeping those separate.
We already had the language, we just need to start enforcing it now.
Right.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, we have a motion, second?
Yep.
All in favor?
I'm confident with the language.
She has the language, yeah.
Well, we've been discussing it out of order, is there further discussion?
Oh, absolutely, yes. After the motion, do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Mark's second.
So, I had, many years ago, I had the best manager I've ever had, and his advice that he gave me was, "Don't major in the minors," which means, spend your ability on those things that are really important, whether it's to your career, to your family, to your church, to your community. So, this is minors, gravel at the end of the driveway is minors. If you've got safety obstruction, or you've got a fence, a pole, utility, stones, concrete, fences, berms, yard decorations, I get that, but we're going to go back to people that may have, may or may not have gotten a permit 10 years ago, 12 years ago, saying, "Sorry, Charlie, you can't prove you got a permit, so now you got to come down and get a permit." I think that onus or responsibility is wrong. Well, I don't know why we have a seven-year retention period on something as important, vitally important as permits, but we can, might put them on digital files or something so we don't lose those, but to ask our residents to go back. And the second thing, so, let's say we do have, we successfully remediate this, and we have 500 or 600 houses that have to remove the gravel from the end of the driveway, where the heck do they put it? What do we do with the gravel? So, we have houses that have a gravel driveway, and they've put in two gravel parking pads, so at what point do we say, "You got to remove one of those"? It just becomes, I think, unwieldy, and I think that street ends, and what we've allowed this, what previous councils have allowed to happen, that is wrong, it is one of the worst decisions I think that's ever been made, and it's going to get rectified. But again, focusing our efforts and focusing on our code enforcement team to spend hundreds and hundreds of hours going through GIS maps to see who put gravel down and when they put it down, and did a change from, to me, that is majoring in the minors, and I think that is a complete waste of time, that we have big fish to fry here, and I think that instructing staff to do that would be a grave mistake on our part.
So, noted. Any other discussion?
Well, I understand, Councilmen, I understand your concern, what would be the wording in the, in your proposed amendment to the?
So, I would propose that we grandfather those homes that have put in gravel street ends, gravel parking pads at the end of the driveway, whether it's one or two.
All of them?
All of them. If it's gravel, no hardscaping, no, nothing else other than simply gravel, it's there now, and if we don't have that, if we tell them they have to remove it, where are we going to put this gravel, just dump it in the trash can?
But this isn't driveway ends, they're taking the right-of-way that's parallel to their property and putting in gravel with some type of border, it's not driveway ends, that's in a different ordinance.
A bigger, a bigger discussion is, do we need a 20-foot right-of-way? Not for tonight, but 20-foot right-of-way at some point is something we should probably discuss. Couldn't be overkill from a utilities perspective.
So, I don't want to put words in your mouth, God forbid, so you're saying, for those folks that we have GIS records, we go back 10 years, how far do we go back? How far do we go back?
We can go back clearly, kind of in a four-year period, back to 2010, and then it jumps back to-
You're saying anyone who put gravel down before 2010 is grandfathered?
Nope.
No, I'm sorry, what, I'm trying to-
No, what I'm saying is that since our permitting, we, we only have retention, a permit retention record of seven years-
Okay.
-to subject people to this policy, it's gravel. It's gravel.
But you would just forgive all of them?
Just forgive it. Just not in the, not in the street ends, in the right-of-way in front of people's homes that are at the end of their property line, their 20-foot right-of-way. That's what I would suggest that we do. Whether they park their cars overnight or if they have a guest, in the, in the grass or the dirt, most likely, or they put gravel, a gravel pad down, and they park there, it doesn't, I think the impact is minimum as far as stormwater runoff is concerned. I think it's just, again, majoring in the minors, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of man-hours for our staff to do this.
So, so how, my question then is, how do, how do I respond to a constituent who says, eight years ago, beyond the town records, eight years ago, I put this in, and I got the permit, and I paid the fee, and my neighbor did this in his yard, but he didn't. Now he's going to get a pass. I think everybody needs to be held accountable for what they've done if they didn't do it the way the town prescribed.
Question.
Good.
I mean, I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Let's hear the motion from Lisa again, so we're clear about what you're voting on. Please.
The motion was to approve the amendments to Section 26-1 with a further amendment to subsection G, which was that, and I don't have this verbatim, I'm going to have to listen to the audio, that upon adoption of the ordinance, gravel in the right-of-way improvements, there's a 12-month abatement period. And for ground level or obstructions in the right-of-way, there is a six-month abatement period for removal.
We ready to vote? I don't know if there's much more to say. All in favor? Opposed? It's four to one.
So follow-up. We need then to figure out what we're going to do, where, where people do with the gravel. If they got to start removing gravel, we've got to figure out whether dump in the trash cans for GFL or can the town do something about this. But we're going to, we've got a big problem.
May I? So I have clear direction. The street ends are in current ordinance that is on pause right now for just the enforcement aspect. Do I have consensus that we should resume enforcement of the current ordinances for street ends?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Moving on. 4.4, have we not already taken care of this with the motion, Lisa, since we talked about the 6.6 million?
Yes, we have, I apologize, that numbering is weird there. The last remaining old business item we have is the awarding of the bid for the 2025, 2026 beach nourishment project. This is the rest of the beach area. We had the-
Okay, all right. So we do need to have that.
Ms. Adams, introduce that if she wants.
Yes.
Okay. So 4.4, Catherine, you want to introduce that, please?
Yes, this is the conclusion of the second round of the bid process that we went through for the beach nourishment for the central part of the island. You heard from the Corps on the eastern section for the 6.6. This is the remaining sand placement beach nourishment for the town of Oak Island. We had two bids received again in this second round, and staff and Moffett Nichols have been entering into negotiations with the low bidder. And we do believe we have an opportunity to move this project forward. Lisa, was that included? I know it was a last minute.
I handed out tonight, just the bid, it's a 25-page bid document. So I just passed out the numbers page, where you can see the total.
So you have before you the opportunity to approve awarding this bid?
So bottom line is, Army Corps of Engineers came in earlier with $6.6 million, and this will be in the range of $33 million.
That's correct. The east end and the rest of the island.
We're as close as we can get to having all the sand we were hoping for, but we're pretty much at our, our limit on the cost.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
And just to clarify, we will be expending all of the state money given to us, correct? We're not returning any dollars?
Every penny.
Thank you.
So can we start with a motion before discussing?
Sure, then I'll ask my question.
Counsel?
I make a motion that we accept the $33 million bid as presented by the town manager.
Second.
All, discussion?
Yes. So we don't have everything, and I understand, short notice, get a one-page copy to us. So here's, here's a concern that I have. So now the volume of sand placement has been reduced all the way down to 941,000 cubic yards of sand. Moffett and Nichol at one point had said, we absolutely needed to have over 1.3 million cubic yards of sand. I mean, they insisted on that number. And, and I repeatedly asked them, well, we'll take what we can get for the money that we can buy. So we can buy 941,000 cubic yards of sand, right?
Or the 33 million.
Or $33 million.
And then the additional 600,000 for the 6.6 million.
Yes, on a different place on the beach. The sand won't go where that sand's going, right?
That's correct.
So I was, I was hoping Moffett and Nichol would be here to present or talk about this reduced volume, because now this tells me that our beach management plan, or beach maintenance plan, whatever you want to call it, they had projected every six years of still dumping like 1.2 or, it was still a huge number. I may even think that their original number was like 1.6, and the beach management's 1.3. I, that's why I wish I had the paper in front of me. So these huge projections and volumes that they initially put before us to build a profile, now we're built, there's no way we're building the profile in, that they've been presenting to us for four years, right? It's not going to happen. But that's why I was hoping they would be here.
Right, so the strategy is to place in the most vulnerable areas of the beach, and there would be less placement on the more healthy areas of the beach, and spread it out and do tapering, as they determined, to have the placement by the pipes from the dredging company to go to those particular vulnerable areas, thereby reducing the number of pipings from the dredging company, which was how we were able to drop the price without substantially reducing volume. So in the end, it was 60,000 cubic yards was the only amount of the, the loss that we had to give up in the end. You can still opt to add that back, but we were recognizing what this counsel had said on multiple occasions, that $40 million is the amount of the project period, and if there, it has to be less volume sand. We found a very creative way, I think, through negotiations, to be able to have more sand just placed differently and thereby reducing the cost. But, but you're correct, their, their last conversation was us, with us, was the six-year profile still holds, in their, their opinion. They're going to be continuing to do final studying on that. So it may, maybe five, but they felt pretty confident we were still going to be in that five to six-year range.
With a smaller profile.
Correct.
Which should equal fewer dollars. Now, I'm not expecting you to answer that. That's why I was expecting them to be here, because I want to hear that we now have a smaller profile on the beach, resulting in a lower demand for a maintenance plan or a management plan into the future. So I would expect to, the profile drives that beach management plan. If it doesn't, then why did, then I'm at a loss for words.
Well, you, yeah, you could have to adjust your management plan if it was substantial. But they didn't think that it was going to be substantially less than that profile.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming they're going to come to us at some point with some updated information.
Sure, we, we will absolutely have them back for you. The intent of getting it on tonight, and it was so short that we just got the information, is because we have a clock running on the bid and the vendor's holding us to the date.
Right. And then I'm assuming work begins immediately after turtle season, when we are given the green light.
Within the November to April window.
It's a November date.
Yes, and they are not held to starting at that date. They're given that window to, to start.
Our current contract with Moffett and Nichol expires in October, is that correct?
There are multiple components of that contract. So there's still a, is it Phase 2, that still has the EIS component that they are just now starting. So that will not be over by then. Their contract management, that part of the contract is still in place and remains through the placement, which may be till next April. So.
Okay.
Multiple components.
So I guess in the end, we should expect to hear an update from Moffett and Nichol.
I'll be happy to get them to do that for you.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
But if I could, just a, kind of a point of clarification, I think it'd be a fallacy for us to accept the fact that six years from now, we'll still have to go 18 miles offshore to get sand. That hopefully some good news between now and six years from now, we'll be able to get sand much closer. So the cost per cubic yard is going to be significantly, hopefully, would be significantly less than what we have right now.
And at the same time, we are simultaneously working with the Corps to be a federal beach by that point next time.
Well, I appreciate the exigency of the situation. And we just could not delay any further, and we have slightly less sand, but slightly less cost. But to Mark's long-term point, the, the long-term maintenance of the beach was predicated on assumptions that Moffett Nichols made on this project that we're not bearing out, right? So now there's some degree of skepticism about their long-term projections, right? And it's, it's like a math problem. If you're wrong at the beginning of it, the conclusion is going to be off. So we do need to talk to them, right? Because they, they've been talking volume and numbers and, and sailing the oceans, drilling via the cores, and, or per Councilman Chula's point, they're 18 miles offshore. So a lot of assumptions that are built into six years from now that will, will be certified immediately because we did this project, may not be true. And we could be looking at a big number on the back end, if we're not careful.
We ready to vote?
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second?
Mayor, can I just note that the motion was to approve or to award the bid? And I just wanted to note that that was two weeks marine.
That it was?
Two weeks marine.
Two, oh, weeks marine, got it. Thank you. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Let's take a 10-minute break, if we can leave it at 10 minutes. We still have all of our new business to go through. So come back, please, at 8:15, and we might be able to get out of here at 10. We are back from break, and before we get started, I just want to let people know that at Bill Smith Park, it's the top of the fifth, and the loggerheads are ahead 4-3. And the starting pitcher is still pitching, so. All right, new business. Consideration of transitioning to a fire tax in lieu, in lieu of fire fees. Where is our chief?
That's okay.
You got this?
Yes. He's here to answer any questions, but this is simply the formal approval by this board for the movement from fire fee to fire tax that we've been discussing, multiple work sessions throughout the budget process. It is included in the budget before you today. We just wanted to have this very clear and transparent, that that is this board's wishes. And the budget that you will be considering in your next item already has the assumption that that change is going to be made.
Excellent. So counsel, do we have a motion for the purposes of discussion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor. A motion to discontinue fire fees for the town of Oak Island.
Second.
All in favor?
Everybody liked it.
Just one quick question. Go ahead, Bob.
No, I'm just going to do the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I had a question, and I didn't know if you had one.
No.
Oh.
Discussion, go ahead.
The chart that you showed during your manager's report did include the fact that the ad valorem tax in this next item coming up is being reduced to 10 cent.
That is correct.
Because we're taking the 3 cent that we've been supplementing the fire department with and moving it to the fire taxes.
That's correct.
So 4 cents is the fire service fee equivalent. 3 cents is moving from the ad valorem tax. So we will still be at, or property tax neutral.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure of that.
Thank you.
Because the, the public has been asking questions. This can get confusing, so I just wanted to clarify. The fire services fees with this motion will be removed. Brunswick County will not collect those. We move the same equivalency to a fire tax. And we know how that works, right? When there was a valuation a few years back, this council worked very hard, or I think it may have been the previous council, to get a new tax rate set. That's how we got to 13 cent where we are today, is we tried to go revenue neutral. But as we all know, revenue neutral means going out to 10 decimal places on your tax rate, which is not realistic. So a few years ago, revenue, revenue neutral meant some people may have paid $30 less on their tax bill, others may have paid $12 or $15 more, or maybe $30 more. So we're going to see the same impact here. Your fire services fee, it goes away, but in the effort to make it an equivalent tax rate, some of you are probably going to see a, a few dollars lower, and some of you may see a few dollars higher. I think council member Carter had even done the math on her property and said, I think it was lower for you.
Went down 25.
Yeah, exactly. I think I did the math on my wife and I's property, and ours is going to go up a little bit. But, you know, that's just this first year as we transition from a fee to find a tax equivalent. So just wanted to make sure everyone understands that.
So counsel, are there any questions remaining for either Catherine or Chief Price? So we have a motion and a second. We ready to vote?
Ready.
All in favor? Five. Consensus.
Historic.
Excellent, moving on. Consideration of adopting the FY 2025-26 budget, approving the budget ordinance, and adopting the 2025-26 fee schedule. And embedded within this is the three-year strategic plan as the basis for the budget. So I just want to make that clear for the, for the public. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, approving the ordinance and adopting the new 2025-2026 fee schedule.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry.
I guess I'll go first. In the packet, it, the way this is worded, and I'm, we're not adopting the paragraph in the packet, but I just want clarification in case the public is reading the packet. It says, "The proposed budget uses a tax rate of 20 cents. 3 cents of that is for beach nourishment and 10 cents for the fire department." That's actually not correct. That should be 7 cents for the fire department. I know it's a clerical thing, I just didn't want the public to read it and start doing the math, and they're going to come up with different numbers. So- So again, just making sure we all understand what the tax rate is going to be.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions, Catherine, I could, about the fee schedule. So page, page one of the fee schedule, credit debit card surcharge. I believe we did have a department or two that was not charging a credit card surcharge. Are we now going to make sure all departments do that? Is that, that's correct?
Yes, that is our intent. It will take us some time to transition.
Okay. Page 12, fire assignments per hour per engine 400, assignments per hour per truck 500. And the right reason for cost change is change verbiage, properties utilized as rentals only. So we have a really good handle on rental properties that are in a rental program. We do not have a good handle, because of records, for those that are Airbnb or VRBO. So any, I mean, not thoughts, I mean, how would we, how would we try to implement something like this for non-rental property rentals, non-rental property program rentals?
Show me again where you are, please.
Page, page 12 of the fee schedule, which is 120 of our book. Fire assignments per hour per engine and assignments per hour per truck. I understand what we're doing here, I just, my question is, how can we identify rental properties if they're not in a rental program that has a sign out front, Better Beach Rentals, Oak Island Accommodations? And there's so many Airbnbs and VRBOs that are rental properties only, that we, really, it's hard for us to identify.
I think the answer is that we'll do the best we can. I don't know if the fire chief has additional thought behind what his intent of that was while he's coming up. I think we do a fairly good job of identifying those here, and folks self-reporting, but when it becomes important for the fire department, maybe that'll encourage more.
So the idea is that we would, when we have a call at a rental, or even a VRBO, whatever, you know, we gather the information, and typically if the call is there and there is a charge that's going to be implied to that property, we would find out in our information gathering, because the people would say, no, we're from Charlotte or whatever, and we're renting it. So when we gather our information, plus I believe through accommodations records, we would also have the ability to find out whether it is a rental property, even though it's done like that. So that's how we would do that.
Yeah, it's the Airbnb and VRBO that we did so hard. But if you're going to do it at the point of incident, then that's the answer.
For any of the stuff for billing, is when we collect the information, we get demographics from the people or whatever, it's, you know, what's your name, phone number, your home address? And of course, if their home address is somewhere outside of where they are, then that raises other flags where it's, okay, you're renting this property? And they typically say, yes, we're down, you know, from Ohio or wherever, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Are you good, Bob?
I am, thank you.
Catherine, on page 112, you're page four, nonprofit 501(c), 50% off. That's scary.
Well.
I would like for that to be at the discretion of the manager. The reason I say that, I know you want to say something, but the reason I'm saying that is if the nonprofit 501(c) was called the Americans for the Overthrow of the Government, but they're a 501(c), it defeats our intentions.
I'd be happy to structure that however the council would like. I will say, my intent with this one in particular is for consistency and clarity. Right now, we have a lot of different fees that some are charged to nonprofits, and some are charged zero. So when I identified this discrepancy across the town within our own, how do we treat nonprofits, we looked for a more fair and consistent approach. For instance, if they rent a room at the rec center, it might be charged nothing. And if they rented something at the 801, they had to pay a little bit. It was very unclear and inconsistent, so the intent is to standardize it at a 50% off rate. But that is completely at your discretion. I'm open to any adjustments.
Maybe not tonight, but I would like to address that somewhere along the way, for that reason that I gave. And up to 50% off or something like that, that puts you right back in the same quandary you were in.
Right.
I'll just note that you've added some additional fees, which I think are very appropriate. I have questions about the fee schedule, but I don't want to delay this process. My understanding from talking to the clerk is that we can bring it up at any time.
Yes, sir. This can be amended at your discretion.
Some of the things I'm interested in, business license, building permits, et cetera, my question would be, and you can, we can deal with this another time, are they indexed to some kind of comparative norm? Because they look low to me, but I don't know that. So I'll just stop there, we can return to this at another date. I love the budget. I love the new fees, especially around events, I think that's progress. The other technical stuff, we can talk about in another meeting earlier in the day.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Just one more quick question. When will we see the requests from nonprofits for donations? Those usually come in, what was the deadline for those, Lisa?
They're already done, and they were in the recommended budget.
Oh, are they?
She, that was in your handout last month.
Okay. I must have overlooked that.
Sorry. So essentially, correct me if I'm wrong, Catherine, but organizations that, based on their audit, were making money and didn't need hours, right? Like water safety or water rescue. So they did not get money from us. Other organizations had to demonstrate in the application process that they met our strategic priorities and had to explain that. So either they could or they couldn't, and that was also another factor that was considered in who received money from us and who didn't.
Excellent.
We ready to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, I'm sorry. Was your motion for the, to adopt the budget and the budget ordinance, or also the fee schedule? We had two separate motions.
It was everything.
Everything, all at once. Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Good job.
Consideration of a request for business license Psychological Tours LLC. Matt, do you have this one?
I don't actually, but I'm happy to introduce Taylor Davis. She's our new planning manager here with the town, and she's going to introduce the next two agenda items for you tonight. Thank you.
If my slides would come up, maybe I would. Julian Mustard, as applicant owner of Psychological Tours LLC, is requesting the approval of a business license to operate an electric bicycle, e-bike, tour company within Oak Island town limits. The company will lead guided tours of six to eight letters through Oak Island on e-bikes provided to customers by Psychological Tours. The proposed hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Section 10-35 of the Town of Oak Island Code of Ordinances requires business license requests which propose the operation of motorized recreational riding device, such as e-bikes, to be heard before the board and issued at the discretion of town council. Equipment and tour location. Per information provided by the applicant, the e-bikes proposed to be used are 750 watt, pedal assist only, with a maximum speed of 20 miles per hour. Bike operators must be at least 16 years old, and all riders will be equipped with a helmet. All bikes and associated equipment will be securely stored in the applicant's residential garage located at 126 Northwest 18th Street. Bikes will be transported to and from the tour start-finish location by pickup truck, equipped with a secure channel-style bike rack and additional four-bike hitch-mounted rack, allowing for eight total bikes to be transported at one time. Tours start and stops proposed are proposed at publicly accessible locations, such as Middleton Park or Oak Island Nature Center. Additionally, they may partner with other businesses who'd be willing to provide access to parking or staging areas. Tour routes are planned to utilize low-traffic streets and avoid high-traffic areas such as Oak Island Drive or streets with speed limits higher than 35 miles per hour. North Carolina State Stat Sheet defines electric-assisted bicycles as a bicycle with two or three wheels that is equipped with a seat or saddle for use by the rider, fully operable pedals for human propulsion, and an electronic motor of no more than 750 watts with maximum speed on level surface when powered solely by. Such a motor is no greater than 20 miles per hour.
Yeah, good deal.
The state does not require registration, licensing, or insurance of e-bikes. Section 28-5 of the town ordinance states no person shall operate an electric-assisted bicycle on the beach strand facing the Atlantic Ocean and/or Lockwood Folly inlet, or the sand dunes within town limits from March 16th through October 14th. Section 28-12 limits the ability to operate an e-bike on any sidewalk within town limits or the crossover walkways. Bicycles are not permitted to be rode along scenic walkways or within 30 feet of their access areas within the area of Oak Island Cabana Access or on the Oak Island Pier. Some conditions of approval, should town council approve the request, staff makes the following recommendation. One, bicycle storage associated with the operation of the business shall be limited to 12 bikes when stored within a residentially zoned structure. So if the applicant is here, if you have any additional questions, she's also available.
Thank you, Taylor. Counsel, for purposes of discussion, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve the request for a business license to operate an electric bicycle tour company.
Sir, second?
Second.
Discussion, please.
I had the pleasure of meeting the applicant in the hallway, so my question, they have already answered, but I want the public to share it. So having just returned from Europe and also other cities where scooters, bikes are prevalent, and when they are scaled improperly, they can be quite dangerous. So I was comforted by the statement in your proposal that you would scale conservatively, and comforted by the fact that you're a residence, and that you understand the town's traffic patterns, all to the good, because I think your business will be successful and might be very successful. And then, there'll be competitors, and then we'll have scaling issues. But thank you, we had a long conversation about that, and I'm confident you would scale appropriately.
Other questions?
Yeah, so if I could just have two. So they can, limited to 12 bikes when stored within a residentially zoned structure. I'm sorry, first and foremost, congratulations, really cool business. But if you're going to put 12 bikes within a residentially zoned structure, is that enclosed with the door that is not exposed to the neighbors? Okay.
It's an enclosed garage, yes.
And secondly, is there, do you plan on any, is there an opportunity to put signage on the bikes?
Can you come to the podium so that, for the sake of the broadcast?
Let me, I'll tell you why I'm asking that question. So when I, I'm walking or driving on the island, and I see an LSV that's doing something they shouldn't be doing, I make two phone calls. The first is to the police department, and the second is to the owner of the golf cart, if it's a rental business. So whether it's Pete's or whomever, I call them directly, saying, just let you know, here's a license plate, and they did a no-no. So if he can do that, that's a thought.
Yeah, and you'll actually see me with everybody, because I will be the primary guide that's taking these individuals around. We will have decals on the bikes, it might be a little difficult to see from far away, but all of the bikes are standardized. We're actually sourcing locally from island bikes, so they're Trek bikes. I can post on social media, so you can see, you know, if you see somebody on one of those bikes doing something they shouldn't be. But it will be easily identified to see me, I have a flag, a bright orange flag off the back of my bike that has the decal on it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, well, just a question, not that it is required for a business permit, but what I'm interested in is, you've mentioned a couple times in the packet here, that you're operating a tour, like e-bike tour, and you'll start at either a nature center or Middleton Park, or, and that's fine, start whatever location you want. But do I assume that your tour, you're going to take advantage of many of the historic places and landmarks and history of the town of Oak Island, and Long Beach, and Yopon Beach? I mean, there's such incredibly rich history in our community, and so many people know about it and would be eager to help, you know, show you or educate you. You may already have already done that, but I think it would be exciting, and I hope that that's your intent, is kind of like, you know, here is old historic, how it began, here's our, you know, tourism sites, here's cool things to do while you're here. And then I would add to that, we suggested a couple of times to start doing like art murals and do like the selfie tours that you see in other cities. This could also be an opportunity, because I noticed you said you would try to partner with some of the businesses. Would be great to adopt some sort of selfie, you know, stops or something, and maybe collect something or whatever. I just, not trying to tell you how to run your business, I'm just hoping that it takes off and that those are the kind of ideas you have to bring to the community, because that would be fantastic.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And so to speak to that point, right now, we're offering three primary tours. One is a history tour that goes around to local sites. One is a nature tour that takes in the nature, the flora, the fauna, but also talking about how we can conserve it. The other is also a picture-perfect tour, where you go around and you take different pictures, really to promote Oak Island in the way that we all know and love it. And so, yes, absolutely, love those ideas, and we're hoping to grow off of, you know, those three primary tours.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for applicant? I just have one request, that you make sure if your intent is to go to the lighthouse, that you introduce yourself at Caswell Beach, since that's technically the town of Caswell Beach.
Okay.
And let them know what that's all about and what your business plan and such is, so that they can embrace you, as opposed to wondering what, yeah, what you're doing.
Thank you.
And again, congratulations. This is long overdue, and I appreciate your inventiveness in entrepreneurship. So counsel, we have a motion on the table to approve the request. We ready to vote? All in favor? There you go.
Thank you so much.
Best of luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
That is exciting. Consideration of a major subdivision, preliminary plat, and major site development plan for Waterside at Oak Island. Taylor, is this you too?
Yes, me too. Okay. Or me again. I think I'm too quick on the buttons. All right, so tonight, I'm also going to be presenting Waterside. This is section A, B, and C. You previously heard D, E, and F. This is a preliminary plat and major site plan. To start off, so section 5.4 of the Unified Development Ordinance requires major subdivision preliminary plats and major site plan submittals be reviewed by the planning board and sent to town council for approval. So that's why we're here tonight. Major subdivision preliminary plats and major site plan applications are administrative approvals without discretionary standards. Section 5.3.5, the plans are provided to members of the technical review committee, and all comments received are provided to the applicant. CLD Engineering is the applicant, and they're here on behalf of Stars and Stripes 3P LLC owner. Again, this is for sections A, B, and C of the Drepack Pud, totaling approximately 18.34 acres, and this is a town home development. The subject property is located approximately 3/4 of a mile west of the intersection of Middleton Avenue and NC Highway 211. The proposed development consists of 137 single-family The proposed development consists of 137 single-family detached townhome dwelling units and has a gross density of 7.47 dwelling units per acre. The development will be served by Brunswick County Utilities. And just as a refresher, this is the approved master development plan that was approved by special use permit. The preliminary plat for areas D, E, and F were recommended for approval at the November 21st, 2024 Planning Board Meeting and subsequently approved by Town Council at the January 14th, 2025 Meeting. This section consisted of 282 single-family detached dwelling units with two stub outs to adjacent parcels. The subject property is zoned CLD. The Drepack PUD is approved for 719 dwelling units with an average gross density of four or 5.8 units per acre. In total, areas A through F, the development will consist of 419 dwelling units with an average gross density of 4.6 units per acre. So they've developed less than what they were approved for. The applicant is proposing a maximum building height of 35 feet and a project boundary setback of 25 feet that will contain a planted vegetative buffer in the non-wetlands areas. The site is not within the special flood hazard area. The proposal includes approximately 7.87 acres of open space and 39.75 acres of preserved wetlands. All roadways are proposed as private right-of-way and will be constructed to meet or exceed the NCDOT design standards. So looking a little closer at the site plan. The proposal includes a 20-foot wide emergency access with flexible delineator posts constructed to support fire apparatus. It includes a stub out to the abutting CLD zoned parcel to the east. The project is proposed to be constructed in two phases with 77 units in phase one and 60 units in phase two. The development includes seven-foot sidewalks on either side of the street as well as street lighting. Following the May Planning Board Meeting, the developer has added eight additional guest parking spaces which will bring them to a total of 39 total spaces. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the preliminary subdivision plat and major site plan for sections A, B, and C of the Waterside Development. Staff is also recommending a motion to approve the major site plan and preliminary plat for Waterside areas A, B, and C. And Nate Allen and Jay Carmine are also here as well as the developer's attorney to answer any additional questions if I can't answer them. And I believe they also have a presentation, but if you have any questions for me first.
Any questions for Taylor before we hear from the developer? You good? Floor's yours.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor White, and thank you to council members here for your time tonight, appreciate it. And also thanks to the planning staff for helping us move along into this next phase of development, the Waterside Project. My name's Nate Allen, I'm with CLD Engineering in Wilmington. We are representing our client Drepack Partners for the proposed major site plan and preliminary plat for the Waterside and Oak Island Townhomes. Here with me today also, as you said, is Jay Carmine, he's an engineer, so if there's some more technical questions that he needs to answer, he's here for that. And Matthew Nichols is the attorney representing Drepack, he's also here if there's any questions I can't handle and hopefully he'll be able to help. Taylor did a great job presenting everything and I don't want to cover all the stuff, so I'll kind of go through this quickly and not waste too much time here, sorry. But again, here, the map here is the 162-acre pod that was originally approved under the special use permit in September of 2015. Areas D, E, and F were the single-family development that have already been approved. Areas A, B, and C are what we're presenting here tonight for the town home development. I'm going to move forward. Here's the site plan as it was previously approved with the single-family development down to the south. Areas A, B, and C, which we're here tonight again, are right there, highlighted in yellow. Townhome sections A, B, and C from the pod are located right off Highway 211. There's the project outline right there. It includes about 18.34 acres and is permitted up to 16 units per acre. The project proposes 137 single-family detached townhomes for a proposed density of 7.47 units per acre. And the green hatch area surrounding the boundary here represents those nearly 40 acres of wetlands, none of which will be impacted with development activities for this project. The proposed townhomes will be accessed from Egert's View Landing, 50-foot public right-of-way that was approved with the single-family development straight down through the middle there. Paved roads with curb and gutter will provide it within the townhome development which will be located in private rights-of-way. As required with private roads, HOA will be established in the community that will be responsible for the ongoing maintenance repairs of roads within this development. We have also provided a roadway stub to the east for any future possible connections with neighboring parcels. Townhome development is typically associated with more pedestrian-focused layout, so we have proposed some bigger sidewalks, as Taylor mentioned, seven-foot sidewalks on both sides of the roads throughout the project. Residents' parking will be provided with individual driveways designed to accommodate two cars outside the units, out of the right-of-way, out of the sidewalk, so they're designed 20 feet of room outside of anywhere pedestrians would be walking and allow everyone to park their cars without blocking people. And also, the townhomes as proposed have garage space as well. To provide additional interconnectivity between the pods and across Egert's View Landing, we have proposed two pedestrian crosswalks seen there. These will be painted, marked with signs, yield signs, pedestrian crossing signs to ensure safety. An emergency access drive is also with, you know, after comments from the Town Planning Staff, will be provided on that first phase with only one entrance into it. And it'll be a paved driveway apron right off the right-of-way and then a turf cell type service which is approved for fire apparatus and emergency vehicle use will go the rest of the way into the proposed development. We have discussed fencing or siren activated gates, and I think what we've come to so far was using something like flexible delineators that you would see between highway medians and such that would be at the entrance to that area to discourage any type of vehicles from trying to come in and out of there as some kind of shortcut. 7.87 acres, nearly half of the project is open space. Additional sidewalks have been proposed throughout some of these open space areas, giving, again, more pedestrian interconnectivity amongst the townhomes. There is two male kiosks proposed, one on each side of the property with additional parking. And as Taylor also pointed out, there is, we counted 28 visitor parking spaces, but that was, we weren't counting the additional spaces that were being shown at the male kiosk, so in total it was that, what was it, 39? So there's a good amount. It was brought up in planning board to, you know, there was substantial concern for cars parking on the streets and blocking people's properties' driveways, so we went back to the drawing board, spoke to the developer, and where we could fit in those extra parking spaces, we did that. 25-foot project boundary buffer as part of the original pod has been provided. This buffer within the townhome development will also act as the building setback line from the property boundaries. Stormwater will be collected through curb inlets and surface drains which will then be routed to one of the two proposed stormwater wet detention basins. In compliance with NCDQ, stormwater requirements, the wet detention basins are designed to capture and treat a minimum of the first 1.5 inches of rainfall and designed to attenuate post-development discharge below pre-development discharges up to the 25-year storm event. The storm drain system itself will be designed to carry that 25-year storm event and it has also been evaluated by engineers to, for that 100-year storm event to ensure that no adjacent properties or structures, lots, would be impacted by a flood in that event. The proposed utilities will be provided by Brunswick Water and Sewer. Water for the townhomes will tie into the system running along the main entrance route that has already been permitted for the single-family development section. Gravity sewer for the townhomes will tie to the existing gravity sewer lines that have been also approved with the single-family development portion of the, and will eventually lead to the pump station that was built with this, that is being built with the single-family development and eventually would be pumped back to the lines along 211. I'd like to thank you all again for your time this morning, review of these plans. We're excited to bring this next phase of Waterside development to the town of Oak Island, and it's our hope that a plan presenting today represent a quality residential development that will provide a, an additional variety of housing choices in Oak Island. We're happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Pardon me. Wetlands abuts 211, so there is no commercial or residential in your development abutting 211, is that correct?
No, there is not, I'll step back. Yeah, well, you can see them right there, I'm trying to find the slide that had them highlighted in green if I can. There they are.
So how far in, would that be, 50 yards?
How far into the property is that right there? I'd say it's at least 100 yards plus 300, 400 feet, just judging, looking at that map right now.
And in looking at your ABC, is A the only area that is set aside for commercial?
No, so part of the approved pod from back in 2015, there was that at the time, that was a consideration, but residential developer, residential property, residential lots were approved for all those areas. And that's just with the current market and what the, what Drepack Partners wants to do right now, they're just proposing townhomes. So no, none of the bigger apartment complexes that could have been here are part of this and there is no commercial aspect right now.
And D, D, and F, that is long in the future?
No, no, D, E, and F were the southern sections, the single-family development that was approved back in January of '25 with Town Council here.
But hasn't been started yet?
I do not believe anything has been started, no. I think roadway improvements out along 211 have started as part of the driveway permits and those improvements have begun, but nothing in the neighborhood yet. You're welcome.
So you mentioned a road for, the future road for neighboring parcel access.
Correct.
Is that something that you're currently involved in discussions now or is that for potential?
No, as part of code requirements with Oak Island and most municipalities with developments like this, future connections are just part of the process to provide that future ability if and when neighboring property decides to develop residential and similar kinds as this, that they could connect to it. So we provide all of our improvements right up to that, right up to that property line.
Okay, and just one more, please.
Yep.
Workforce housing, is that, is that in the plan, A? And B, if it's not in the plan, is that something that you may be able to figure out? There's such a need in our community for workforce housing, so if that was something that you, that could work for you financially, I know our community would be very appreciative of that.
Yeah, I do understand the concern. I can't speak to that personally, I don't have knowledge of that. You know, it is planned right now for single-family residential. Matt, do you have anything on top of that?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council, my name is Matt Nichols. I'm an attorney in Wilmington and I represent the owner, owner applicant, and I appreciate the opportunity to be part of the presentation. No, sir, I don't think that's specifically planned, however, I would just note a few things. The townhouse, townhome development, and I'm not a planner, but I've sort of learned this through the process of that, is hopefully it's viewed as sort of providing what I've, I've heard planners call the missing middle, meaning of a different housing type. And while it's hard to say that a townhome is going to be less expensive than a single-family home, because we all know we've seen some very expensive townhomes before, but I think on average you would see that it's a lower price point than a, I guess, similarly situated new construction detached, single-family home, simply because of the construction type and the ability to make for a less expensive unit than that. And I think what you'll see in some of the developments that I've seen in Wilmington I've been involved with is, while it wouldn't be classified as affordable housing, and I don't want to stand before you today and say this will be affordable housing from a definitional standpoint because it's not, but hopefully it's viewed in a positive way that it is providing that sort of missing middle housing type that provides some additional density and I would say sort of on average a lower price point than you would get in a detached, single-family home on its own lot. So, but it's a great question, sir, and it will be, it's intended to be a for-sale product also, so I think that that hopefully promotes homeownership and there's benefits to that as being a for-sale product, but that's the current intent of the development. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Other questions?
Clarify and expand a little bit on Councilman Craft's question. So correctly, in the original submission, there was a commercial entity, but that has since changed, is that correct? There's no commercial property envisioned?
There is no commercial being proposed for the, for sections A, B, and C from the original, I mean, the 2015 pod is what you're referring to where it showed that as a possible, yeah.
Was that the entrance off of 211, if I remember correctly?
The, yeah, these exact lots right there, yep. And if I...
And that's the result of market conditions?
Yeah, and, you know, you go back to that pod and it's written right there in the pod, it's in the language right below it, and it says all these areas, you know, this is subject to market changes. So, you know, here we are 10 years later, it's now coming to fruition. Developers at this point believe that a townhome product for this section of the property with the single-family home there was more appropriate.
Thank you.
And opted not to pursue that.
Anyone else? Satisfied? Do we have a motion?
Well, disappointing, but it's understandable.
Yeah, it is, very disappointing. 211, front is Brian Moore Estate.
I would have one question for either Taylor or for Matt. The initial pod was approved in 2015. How long can that thing go with no activity and now in 2025 we get a project that doesn't meet our 80/20 commercial residential goal?
You have the continuance of this?
Yeah, so yes, it was approved in 2015, subject to vested rights, et cetera. The applicant came forward with substantial investment on the property in good faith based on a local government approval, so at that point it had to be given a common law vested right to continue with the project at that point. But yeah, I definitely understand your point. Typically, a special use permit now is only valid for two years until such time that it expires after that two-year point. It is subject to more strenuous setup for vested... It, it is subject to more strenuous setup for vested rights and, uh, and acceptance for that vesting. Yes, ma'am.
If I can ask, Matt, if this, some of this is zoned commercial low-density, and none of it is being used for commercial, how are we justifying that?
Uh, so the zoning is commercial low-density. This development is being submitted under the special use permit that was approved in 2015. That approval set up for residential throughout, even though, um, as is mentioned, subsection, or section A of it, um, did have a potential retail component, it also included residential, uh, vertical, horizontal, mixed use. So at that point, we're, we're subject to the, the special use permit that was originally approved in 2015. Yes, sir.
So when the agreement was made in 2015?
We're, we're held to that.
There is an understanding that may not be...
Unless the permit expires or is invalidated in some other way. Yes, sir.
Matt, doesn't a special use permit expire in 24 months?
Two years, yes, sir. This one's been extended a couple of times, I believe, by town council, by previous councils, uh, and as I mentioned, um, they, they, after those, uh, you know, when those approvals were running out, um, our previous ordinances, it was, was approved under our district as far as what constitutes a vested, a vested right to develop the property, um, so at that point, it was subject to a vested right based on their investments in the property and the improvements that had been put on it. But it, it had been, uh, extended more than once by council previously, yes, sir.
Counsel, motion?
I'd like to ask one further question.
Please, go ahead.
Our, our attorney, if I can get her attention here for a second.
Question coming your way.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt your conversation. Given the fact that we, as a community, desperately need commercial, could we have zoned the property and restricted the sole purpose to commercial, or would that have been illegal?
What, at, at some time after they had the SUP?
No, if, if we could go back in time to 2015, could we have constructed an ordinance that said, this property, which abuts 211, can only be used for a commercial purpose, no, no other? Is that legal?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question.
There are multiple uses permitted in there, but if we restricted it to just one, would that be legal?
Matt?
I'll address that. Um, let me think about how to answer this. Prior to the, if this was in 2015, could there be a zoning that was commercial only?
Yes.
The answer is yes.
That is my question. Restrictively, only this?
Yes.
Is it legal today?
Um, likely not with downzoning provisions that are in place in the state statutes, without property owner consent.
Okay. That was my question. So the answer is, you would end up in a long legal process if you tried to do that.
Without property owner consent, if you were to strip permitted uses, yes.
Okay.
Matt, one last question, sir. Every indication is our hands are tied. They're here asking for permission to go forward. How long do we wait with no activity before we can then go back to our wishes?
Well, um, in this particular project, the, should council grant the, uh, the site plan and subdivision approval, that approval would be good for two years, but the underlying special use permit would not go away at that point, it would still remain valid.
For how long?
Uh, since the project's begun, it would, it's valid indefinitely.
All good questions.
All disappointing answers, what can I say?
Well, I think this is a cautionary tale for council to look forward to areas that we have, and to zone them appropriately if we want to reserve them for commercial. Again, a motion?
Bill, you want to make it?
It's on 160.
Not really. Who wants to make it?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed major subdivision preliminary plat and major site plan presented here and known as Waterside at Oak Island.
Is there a second? All in favor? Five oh.
Thank you all for your time.
Please, um, extend the comments to the property owner and developer.
Yes, ma'am.
What our concerns are, I'd appreciate that very much.
Yes, I will, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, next, consideration of allowing real estate signs in the right-of-way. Do we have staff presenting this, or is it...
I'll, I'll present it, but I do have some questions for Matt, if I may, Matt. You turned in seven or eight pages to accompany this?
Uh, I believe the town clerk attached the...
Yes, I just attached the sign, current sign ordinances for reference.
Uh, I'm going to ask you, on page 199 of mine, which is seven of 16, it says, "Signs must be placed no closer than 10 feet from the property line." Uh, that is section 1, 1026.2, uh, 5. Saying, so that, I'm assuming, is business signs, is that correct?
Those are permanent signs.
Permanent business signs, okay. Then on the next page, it says, on page 200, freestanding, "Signs must be placed no closer than 10 feet from property line." That is 1026.3, 5 again.
Mm-hmm. Permanent business, permanent signs, yes, sir.
Okay. One more. 1026.4.3, "Signs must be placed no closer than 10 feet from property line." And that one is?
Those are, all those sections you references are, are referencing are for permanent signs, yes.
Okay, so, all the business signs and all the permanent signs can be placed 10 feet from, it says property line, does that mean 10 feet from the end of the road, or where is the property line?
Uh, it would be any property line, it would be the, the actual edge of the property, not, so...
The right-of-way?
It would be 10 feet from the edge of the right-of-way, yes, not 10 feet from the edge of the pavement, or...
Okay.
10 feet from sidewalks or anything like that. You actually have to make it to the property, then go an additional 10 feet.
Okay. So what, the reason I brought this forward was, I want to submit to the planning board a consideration of exception for real estate signs to be allowed to be 10 feet from the blacktop. Uh, and if I have to give you justifications and reasonings, the justification and reasonings are that every time we have a concert on Friday night, we run to the realtors and ask them to, uh, sponsor the, that. Every time Boy Scouts and Little Leagues want money, they go to the realtors. Every time the realtors need help, nobody seems to listen. Asking them to put their signs 20 feet into a yard, and somebody drives down Oak Island Drive, and they look to their left and look to the right to see if any houses are for sale, they can't see a for-sale sign 20 feet into the yard. If it was 10 feet off the pavement, which I'm asking you to take to the planning board to, uh, consider that exception, those signs could be seen when people are driving down Oak Island Drive. Again, I'm trying to be a softer, gentler town and help, help my neighbors.
Are these temporary signs?
These are temporary signs. I'm not asking for every temporary sign, I'm asking for a consideration of exception for real estate signs.
Uh, I'll, I'll have that, uh, uh, the United States Constitution has ruled that we cannot base signs based on the advertise, the advertisement on the sign, which, looking at exempting real estate signs, would certainly qualify, uh, to be subject to that decision.
Well, then let's make it for temporary signs.
And our, just to clarify, our, our current ordinance requirements for temporary signs requires them to be either on a property, so they can be right on that front property line, uh, or 20 feet from the edge of the pavement, not 20 feet onto the property. You don't have to get to that front property line and then go back an additional 20 feet, it's just 20 feet from that pavement.
And I'd like for you to take it at the planning board, consider an exception for 10 feet from the pavement.
Be happy to hear the consensus in town council.
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
I, I, I agree with Matt. Um, I mean, this is, we are treading into First Amendment territory, notwithstanding the, um, the laudable goal of, of, you know, helping the real estate community or whatever. It, you can't distinguish, it's called, you, you have to be content neutral, you can't distinguish, you can't allow something for, for example, one group of occupations and not for another. It would have to, have to be allowed for everyone.
Matt made that clear, and I'm, I'm content with that. 10 feet from the pavement for temporary signs. If somebody wants to put up a sign saying, "Hot dogs two for $4," they, they get to be the beneficiary of my plea for real estate signs in a yard.
Well, I mean, it's, that's different than what I thought, um, but I, I still, um, I think we, Matt, we'd have to talk about this a little bit, like, you know, what, what's the, um, what's the breadth of, of the type of, what's the breadth of the type of signs that would be allowed in the right-of-way? Is it just, is it, is it anything, then?
So our, uh, I'll clarify, um, the, the section that would need to be amended in order to make this change is, uh, it's actually on page 202 of the agenda packet, um, is section 10 dot 26 dot 5 dot 4, uh, that's, it's under, under the subsection of signs in right-of-way in public properties. Uh, this is the section that says that temporary signs may be placed 20 feet from the edge of the road pavement, five feet from the, uh, house or structure side of a sidewalk, or on the property. Uh, it's temporary signs are to be measured from the edge of the road pavement or sidewalk to the furthest most edge of the sign, closest to the road, not the signpost. So to accomplish, uh, Mr. Kraft's goals, you would amend that 20 to 10.
Yes. And if we don't do that, we have to look in our friends' and neighbors' face and say, "I wasn't in favor of it." I'm going to look at my friends' and neighbors' face and say, "I was in favor of it." So hopefully, we can get three votes.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Could this be time-bound? So this not be 24/7, five, seven days a week, if, if open houses are typically...
I'm not concerned by open houses, I, I just want whatever realtor we're talking about, Fred, to be able to put a sign in the yard saying, "This house is for sale, please call me at 90, 910-422-3869." And hopefully, it'll sell in two weeks, it might sell in two months.
And I'd be happy to speak from kind of a, a practical enforcement side of, of this ordinance. Most places, most real estate agents that post signs on properties typically will post them kind of in line with the, with the utilities, right? You see them kind of lined up with the, you know, the infrastructure that's right there on the side of the road. That typically, you know, we, we measured a few, and that typically runs anywhere from 15 to 18 feet off of the edge of the pavement, which, which is about, in my experience, where we've seen most signs actually get placed, uh, on the property. Now, a zoning technician, I mean, it's like going five miles over the speed limit, right? The, the zoning technician rides by, they've, they've got something else to worry about, and they're, they're not stopping to check and see, is, is this actually 20 feet off of the pavement, or, or anything like that.
I can appreciate that, but for the first time in 10 years, our code enforcement people went to all the offices two months ago with a piece of paper telling them 20 feet off.
That doesn't mean the speed limit sign that's, says 45 miles an hour is invalid, just because I know somebody's not going to give me a ticket for going 48. Uh, we don't tell them to take down the speed limit signs in that instance. But certainly, like I said, uh, the, the practical reality is, is that typically, that they're a little bit closer to the road than, than 20 feet, in our experience, so...
Make sure I understand, I'm trying to process this. So, permanent business signs are not allowed in the right-of-way?
That's correct, yes, sir. Permanent signs are not permitted in the right-of-way at all.
Is a proposal or request from Councilman Kraft, specific to realis, real estate, which we know we can't do now, is allow them to put a sign in the right-of-way to advertise...
Not in the right-of-way, 10 feet off the road, that's not the right-of-way?
That is the right-of-way.
It's in the right-of-way?
Yes, sir.
So, as long as it's on their property, not a problem?
That's right, yes, sir.
In the right-of-way is a problem?
And the, the, the closest you can get to the pavement in the right-of-way now is 20 feet.
Okay.
And that, you, you typically wouldn't see that except on, like, East Oak Island Drive, where we have a very, you know, 100, sometimes 120-foot wide right-of-way, and the, the travel lanes are, you know, much smaller than that, so there's actually quite a bit before you get to the property. So there's a, only a few instances where, uh, the 20-feet rule would even benefit you.
So, Councilman Kraft, I understand what you're trying to do to help some friends, unintended consequences. So let's think about that, uh, a former elected official needs to buy all signs that he puts on his front lawn, we're now going to allow him then to potentially put that into the right-of-way, because, because we can't discriminate for First Amendment rights. Make sure I got that clear.
That's right, yeah, we can't, can't base it on the message, and that's...
Got it. Okay, thank you.
His sign's going to be there anyway, so if, if that's going to be our stickler, then wow, we're letting the, the wrong person dictate our policies.
No, just, it's, it's opening up, it's a slippery slope, in my opinion. What I know what you're trying to do, which is favor one industry, but it's a slippery slope, because we can't do that, it's going to be...
I'm not favoring one industry, I've been told early on that temporary signs have to be all-inclusive, so I can yield that and be fine with temporary signs being all-inclusive. But I have a frustration with every time some group in Oak Island wants money, they run to realtors. Every time realtor finally asks for a concession on something, uh, we blame it on the ex-mayor. There has to be, everything doesn't have to be complicated, we can, we can be softer and gentler if we choose to.
What's the rule for a temporary sign, Matt?
Uh, as far as, what is a temporary sign, or as far as...
How long can it remain?
Um, temporary signs are allowed up to 100, I believe, 180 calendar days.
Okay.
Uh, prior to getting a zoning permit, and that, now, if you got a zoning permit, it could be indefinite at that point.
So currently, it's six months? I was just curious.
Mark, I thought Matt said, I thought it was 60 calendar days.
Oh, sorry, I apologize.
That's okay, page, uh, page 201.
1026.1.3.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. Okay. Apologize.
Um, before we discuss further, if there are no other questions for Matt, can we make a motion?
I, I'd like some clarification, right?
Go ahead.
Because, um, I hear what Councilman Kraft is saying, I don't, we all want our local businesses to succeed, but, so the choice that's being framed from our attorney to, to you, Matt, to us, is, if you make an exception, it's got to be for everyone for 60 days.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Is that the choice essentially, that the planning board would have to approve?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure we know what we're talking about. Okay. That, that would include anything? Any, any message?
Yes, sir.
I can make a motion to submit to the planning board, consider an exception for temporary signs to be allowed to be within 10 feet of the blacktop.
There a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I think that somebody else can wrestle with this question, and the answer is, we have the answer from our council, from our planner, it's, you'd have to allow every sign.
And I don't have a problem with every sign. What are we worried about? We worried about a hot dog stand saying, "Two for $5"? Golly, they sold some hot dogs that day. What are we worrying about? What's, what's really bothering us about a temporary sign? Uh, if they're selling hot dogs two for $5, they're a local business trying to make a living. So I'm, I'm, I've been asked by some realtors to go to bat for them. If hot dog sales or slush puppies benefit, it's not the end of the world.
Yeah, there are others that post in the right-of-way currently?
Um, I just had a quick question. So on page 201, that was referenced in terms of displaying them for greater than 60 days. I guess I have two questions. I guess I have two questions. First question is, so what happens if a house is still on the market after 60 days? Do those realtor pull the sign up, wait 24 hours, and stick it right back in the ground?
That would be an option for them, yes, sir. Alternatively, they could actually come in and get a, the 60-day limit is subject to a zoning permit. So someone could come in and get a zoning permit for a temporary sign. I believe the fee's $25, and it's minimal. And then it could remain for a longer period of time, yes, sir.
So then, under that same section, because that was item number two, where the 60-day limit is marked, correct?
Yes.
Which falls under section 10 dot 26 dot 4. Is that how I'm reading that? That's itemized number two under that section? So then, itemized number three says, "Sign must be placed no closer than 10 feet from the property line."
That's for those ground or monument signs that are, so those are, those are footnotes to the table above it. So you'll see that, that three that you're talking about applies to ground or monument, ground, monument or ground-mounted signs. Those are permanent signs, not the temporary signs.
So number two would apply to that as well?
And number two is footnoted under temporary. So those are footnotes to those specific signs that are permitted.
I see what you're saying.
They're, they're, those subsections are for specific signs in that table.
Okay. And then today, when signs are in that 18-foot gray area where the utilities are, we're not enforcing those, are we?
Typically, zoning is not going to stop and measure that. They're on the way to something else to deal with, yes, sir.
Councilman Kraft, I don't know if you would consider saying temporary signs could be 15 feet instead of 10, but that, maybe that's for the planning board to have that conversation. I think they can listen.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. On a scale of 1 to 10, 7's a whole lot better than 0.
I'm not suggesting you have to amend your, your motion. I'm just suggesting that planning board has ears, and everybody's here. So maybe they'll open that conversation, perhaps.
Matt, under temporary signs, it includes the flag banners that we fought about two years ago?
Yeah, so feather, are you talking about feather flags or the?
Feather flags, right.
So feather flags are subject to some, it might not be in what was printed out. They're subject to some specific regulations in here as far as placement and location and the numbers as well. Limited to two flags per business, limited to 12 feet in height, et cetera. They also have to be a certain distance from the actual entrance to the property.
So they're not considered a temporary sign? That's all I was looking for.
Yeah, they're, they're their own category of signage, you know? So this wouldn't expand feather flags, this allowance, no ma'am.
And there's no?
Have a more specific regulation.
No restriction on size?
I believe we do have some size restrictions in here.
1.3, so that the size is elsewhere.
You're with me, this is a complicated ordinance. Yeah, temporary signs typically, maximum square footage is eight feet, eight square feet of sign face, four feet high.
Going along the lines of what Councilman Martin said, I just want to get this in front of the planning board. I'll stick with my 10-foot, but I'm not upset at all if you go to the planning board and say, and Councilman Kraft said he could probably live with 15 on a scale of 1 to 10. He gave some speech about a 7. I just want to get this in front of the planning board, see where we go.
So we have a motion and a second. Counsel ready to vote? All in favor? All opposed? It's 4 to 1. Lisa? Last, but not least, is consideration of Boards and Committees Strategic Plan for Optimization, Strategic Plan 1.4. I again ask this to be on the agenda after removing it last month because of time, the projected length of the meeting. Thank you, Matt, by the way, and Taylor. So this document is revised. There are, the substance of the document remains the same. There have been further delineation in terms of the proposed project timeline based on where we are in the calendar at this time. And the, there are proposed options for how to move forward on this effort on page 212. There are three options. So one is conducted under the guidance of the mayor with assistance of two council members. Town manager will serve as ex officio. The work group, the initiative, is conducted under the guidance of two members of council. The mayor and town manager will serve as ex officio. It's option two. Option three, direct the town manager to guide this work using staff and working in concert with the mayor and council representatives. And the caveat that, the acknowledgement that this would place 1.4 in competition with the other strategic priorities for financial, temporal, and material resources extending the proposed project timeline. So with that, is there a motion from counsel for the purpose of discussion?
Uh, Mayor, I would make a motion that we accept this project proposal as presented, selecting option one as the option to lead the effort. That's my motion.
Is there a second? So we can't move forward with discussion? Is there another motion?
No, I would, I would second that for the sake of conversation.
Okay. Counsel, discussion?
When I look at the, the three options, I immediately go to option three, which is directing the town manager to do something which is really the responsibility of town council. And the town manager is carrying the weight of her shoulders in leading this town. So I would take option three off the table. I think this project is so huge, though. I think that option two is something that we should seriously consider, which is two council members, working with the mayor, working with the town manager, working in a collaborative way where we can split responsibilities. You know, my concern is that having the mayor and the town manager, it's going to put so much on you because this, we look at all the moving parts, there's so many parts to this that if we are in agreement, then we can do it, we can split it up. And I think that maybe we can get back on schedule and hit these timelines as long as we're able to split work.
I would, I would support option two, and I would argue that the mayor is ex officio to all committees by definition. So is the town manager, but the manager has staff. She doesn't necessarily have to be the manager. It doesn't necessarily have to be an individual other than the two council people who are running this, and then the necessary staff as needed as the project unfolds. And I think, as you were saying at the last meeting, you were exasperated, "Well, I'm ready to move forward." So I think two works, and I think you're right, it would have to be collegial. I mean, you know, the workload gets divided. And some work has already been done, right? That needs to be presented to everyone, but I think we're not as far behind as we think.
I would be happy to amend my motion to include option two. My reticence for doing that is that, I'm sorry to say, I don't see a lot of people on this council doing work outside of these Tuesday evening meetings. And so I think there needs to be, I think the people we select then becomes important. And I don't understand what the, it's ongoing, it's been ongoing for two years now, this beef against the mayor, providing leadership for these kind of projects. The public needs to know that it's happening, and there's no reason for it.
So I see Councilman Carter's point, and I actually, I would, since you mentioned it, option four. And option four, I would look at potentially co-chairs, would be the mayor and two council members. So rather than be an ex officio, is being able to be a key driving partner in this process. You know, it's something you've taken to heart. Mayor, you've been a big part of this process, so making you, putting you into an ex officio status really diminishes your role in this. And I would, actually, option four is what I personally would like to say, and have three co-chairs.
I will not vote for option one. I will not vote for option three. I will not vote for option four. This is a town council matter. The advisory boards answer to the town council. Town council should take the lead on this.
So who would you recommend being the two people from town council to?
Well, we all, we all talk transparency and openness. We've all talked amongst ourselves for the last month, Bill Kraft and Bob Chulo.
I would support that if the mayor was involved. If the mayor's not involved, I will not support that. I will ask to be one of those two people.
And the mayor is the member, is a member of town council. There's six of us.
Option two.
We continue to argue that the mayor doesn't, doesn't have a role on council, and that's not what the?
Here at the dais.
And it doesn't matter to me. Whatever council decides is fine. I will make my recommendations, having been close to this project for a while, but I have no dog in this fight. And if council wants to move forward with option two, I'm perfectly satisfied with that. This is for y'all to wrestle with.
Well, right now, option one's on the floor.
I think it's a sad state of affairs for our boards and committees that, you know, we're going to argue over who the people are working on it when they've been waiting so long to have some direction from this council. They have had absolutely no, I won't say no direction, but poor direction from this council for years, and they have begged for information. They have begged to have their, their roles and responsibilities defined. And we're going to sit here and squabble because we don't want the mayor involved. What a disappointment for, you know, I'm sorry to our boards and committees. That's why I'll say, "I'm sorry."
So Terry, are you willing to amend your motion?
Only if I know who the two people, two council members, are going to be. Because there have to be two council members. If two council members are going to drive it, it has to be two council members who get in there and do the work. And it's a lot of work. It's a lot of, it's a lot of typing, it's a lot of writing, it's a lot of editing. And I know that I have the ability to do that, and that I will get that done.
So just for point of clarification, this proposal includes a work group and, and public, public meetings when work product is, would be brought forward in a public, a public space. So that's also in this proposal, just to bring that
Absolutely.
to light.
And, you know, if someone else wants to present a different option, I would draw my motion.
So there will be a work group. And Catherine and I did a listening session in May just to hear what council members' thoughts are. And we also presented the strategic plan, all of it, not just 1.4. They wanted to hear, in fact, what they had to say and what their needs are. And they did talk about the ability to have clarified roles, the ability to have access to training and orientation upon being appointed. So all of these are items, and they had other recommendations as well that would include board and committee members being able to get together periodically and exchange ideas, which doesn't require any action on the part of, of council. But they're very excited to be engaged in this work. And per this recommendation, they would be members of the leadership, so they would either be a chair or a vice chair. But they're very excited about having clarification of role and having, not just the documents, but the support that an orientation would provide upon being seated, as well as any necessary training that would be included. So just bringing that to light for the sake of the plan. But whatever it is council wants to do, I'm happy to abide by that.
Tell you what, I've thought about it. I'll amend my motion. I'll either withdraw my, my motion so someone can make the motion for option two, or I'll amend my motion to option two and select Councilman Kraft and Councilman Chulo to do all this work. That's my motion.
So which is it?
Option two, Councilman Kraft and Councilman Chulo. That's what, that's what they want to do, so let's go, let's go that way.
Discussion?
I have a second first.
Oh, a second?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
So my opinion, that's setting us up for failure. Complete and utter failure. The thought, Bill, of you and I spending countless hours working on this with some assistance, possibly maybe from a mayor who you appear to be threatened by, seems to be setting us up for failure. Option four, we just have a mayor and two council members as three co-chairs. We work together in a collaborative way. I just, I don't understand, I was trying to understand, like, what's the, what's the risk there? Like, what's the harm? What's, what's the threatening there? And I don't get any of that. The mayor is a member, an elected member of town council. The mayor of the town, of the mayor of the town doesn't have a vote, but she's a member of town council, no different from the rest of us. So I struggle to understand why that would be perceived as being problematic. And to cut her out of that process and to bring her in as a consulting process when the mayor is able to roll up her sleeves and do a lot of the work, I would think we'd welcome that, right? Along with all the boards and committees, the chairs and vice chairs, who all want to roll up their sleeves and do this together. Let's, let's roll up our sleeves and do it together.
I've been attacked twice, and I don't know why. And I've bit my tongue for 10 minutes. And now let me point out to you all what nobody wants to admit. The state statute of the state of North Carolina in the charter given to Oak Island says the mayor's role is to conduct meetings on Tuesday at the town council meeting, call special town council meetings, sign contracts. The school of government says beyond that, the mayor's role is ceremonial. Now, if you all want to say that I'm threatened by the mayor, I'm not threatened by anybody. I want everybody to stay in their lane. And this, the advisory boards answer to the town council. They don't get dictated to by the mayor, they don't get told how to operate by the mayor, they answer to the town council. If you, if council members don't want to work on this, fine, then we won't, we won't go forward with it. But for you all to bow down and say that the mayor's the only answer we've got, she ran for mayor, she didn't run for town council. This is a town council issue. Go ahead.
What's in the charter, which was approved by the General Assembly, states' primary roles and responsibilities, but it's not exclusive. And I have never attempted to tell a, neither the manager nor committees and boards what to do, ever, never, in the three and a half years I've been in this role. And I've done nothing that the mayor of Wilmington, the mayor of Leland, the mayor of Shiloh, the mayor of St. James, I've done nothing beyond what they don't do every day, which is to bring resources and money to the town so that it can do what the town council has. so that it can do what the town council has said that it wants to do. I've not stood in anyone's way. I don't tell people how to vote. I express advice in council, bringing to the fore the issues that come before to make sure we've considered every angle, that council has that in front of them. And I personally don't, I'm not interested in voting. I've said from the beginning, it's influence. And if this town's council believes that my skills and abilities and/or my work beyond the town boundaries to bring resources and to talk to other officials, that's not in the charter. To talk to state officials, to talk to the Army Corps of Engineers, to talk to NC Byways, to talk to other mayors about what's going on in terms of networking and to attend meetings. If that is objectionable to the other members of council, my colleagues, you'll have my resignation tomorrow because I'm not working for the town. The town did not vote for me to run meetings and to be a figurehead. There's not anyone that would give me a dollar for that role. And why is it that you would object to skills and abilities being brought to the benefit of the town? That makes no sense to me. So to go outside of what the General Assembly has approved, to look for a reason to exclude the mayor from being part of town council or to put me in a box, that's not a role I ran for. And that's not a role I would abide by. And you'll have my resignation tomorrow.
Why don't we take a step back here for a minute? First of all, I don't think Councilwoman Carter's motion is acceptable. You can't have a motion that appoints someone to something that they haven't volunteered for on a committee basis.
Well, they have.
Okay.
Yeah, they have.
May I finish?
Sure.
Thank you. So option two, as presented in the document, describes the town manager and the mayor as ex officio. Councilman Chulo has offered a modification. The mayor is a member. Two council members are the chairs. The town manager is a manager or she can send her designate, which I would advise her to do. That stops the strife, moves us forward. You know, if you're going to identify all the problems and reject all the solutions, then we're not going anywhere. It's that simple.
I agree.
And so this is the compromise, either you take it or you don't. You know, I'm tired of talking about this. I hear your concerns. You hear our concerns, his concern. Let's try to work this out.
I would accept Mr. Chulo's option four. That, that is acceptable to me. Mr. Kraft has said he will not.
Well, let's, we have other council members who have the chance to weigh in on that. This would be the moment.
So Terry, are you willing to amend your option or withdraw?
I would, I would draw my motion for option, whatever option. I made option one.
One. So do we have a motion, council?
I would like to make a motion for option four. Direct the option fours conducted under the guidance of the mayor and two council members as co-chairs. And the town manager and staff will serve as ex officio members of the work group.
That's basically two.
That's two. You're modifying two, Bob. Why create another whole option that doesn't exist in the document?
Okay. Let's change the wording then.
Yes, you were, you were amending option two.
Guidance of two members of the mayor and two members of, two council members as co-chairs.
Question is, can we live with that compromise?
So that's the same as option one, except what's the, what's the issue with option one? Is it the word guidance of the mayor? I mean, is that what the, is that what the option, the problem is on option one?
Option, yes, option two resolves that problem. Obviously, the, the mayor is going to be part of the process. So is the town manager. But the direction, the chairmanship, if you will, is from council. It's what you've been saying all along. It's a council problem. Council needs to run it. So there you go.
So Bob, your option four is different.
Or option four, modified option two, whatever you want to call it. Two members of council and the mayor as co-chairs with the assistance of the town manager as ex officio member. If we just look at the work that's going to go into this, we look at the, the volume of documents, I question why anybody in their right mind would say, we don't want that help as a co-chair. If you're not, if, there's so much involved here. There's so many moving parts. We want as many hands, right? As many, it takes a village. We want as many hands involved in this as possible and collaboratively work on it together. So that's my motion.
I will second your motion for option four.
Discussion?
So option four is option two, but we've, we've added the mayor as, as a full-time member of the committee. Am I understanding that because the hour's late?
You've got that right. Yes.
Two council chairs, they're directing it. The mayor and the manager are members.
That's incorrect. There are three co-chairs, the mayor and two council members. That's what I would like to see. I think that's the only way we get this thing done and we stick to a timeline. If we do anything other than that, I see this, this slippage. And I don't think we're going to get it done anywhere near, according to this timeline, in my opinion.
And I want to be on record as saying I really don't care. Like John, I'm tired of talking about it.
I wonder who your two council members are going to be.
Whoever council decides. You put your name forward, as did Bob. I don't see anyone else stepping forward. Let me do this because it's late. I'm out of it altogether. Y'all want to do the work? I'll cheer you from the sideline. If that's the objection, then I'm happy to pull myself out of it altogether. And I wish you all luck. You've got a work group that you need to appoint. Six to eight is a, probably a good, a good group where you can divide, you know, get feedback on your input. But that's not my determination either. Professionally, I've done this work six ways from Sunday, but I'm tired about arguing about the role of the mayor and going to obscure passages and other documents when our document works well. And why you wouldn't want the mayor to work on behalf of the town is beyond me. But council needs to come to this decision. And I, based on your decision, you'll either have my resignation or my continued involvement. But I currently am beyond, I'm tired of arguing it. I think this is adolescent behavior. I don't really understand the issue and why you would turn down help and bringing resources and money to the town. But if that's your decision, then I can abide by that and I'll make my personal decision based on what council wants to do. Because quite frankly, I'm tired of arguing about why you would object to me working with other mayors to the sake of our region, which affects Oak Island, or why you would object to me working with the Army Corps of Engineers, why you would object to me working with other mayors across the Brunswick County. I'm not doing anything that the other mayors across North Carolina are doing. And if you want a mayor that is strictly someone who will speak to, be a figurehead, then you need to change the charter and make it that and, and be done with it. But that's not a job I sought and that's not a job I would reapply for. I wouldn't, I wouldn't run again. And if that's the outcome that you're looking for, I can go back to my private life and be just absolutely satisfied.
I don't think anybody in their right mind would want that job. Attending Tuesday night meetings, council meetings, kissing babies, cutting ribbons, and addressing the town periodically. That's, you probably invest 25 or 30 hours a week in this town. And if you limit it to the aforementioned, instead of 25 or 30 hours a week, it probably is an hour or two a week. And to limit, to say your, your responsibilities are limited to what is stated in the charter is a gross misrepresentation of what the charter is. It does not say it's limited to. It just gives you a blueprint in addition to all the other, the other responsibilities of mayor.
You all are talking about everything except advisory boards. Who do you want to oversee your advisory board statements?
Well, Bill, you and Bob said y'all had discussed wanting to do it. And you told me a couple of weeks ago when we met that you wanted to do it. And so I recommend, I suggest the two of you place yourselves in denomination to do it.
I'm out. That leaves you with option two.
Option five is drop it in the town manager's lap. Tell her good luck.
No, that's actually option three.
That's exactly right.
That would be the most disrespectful thing we could do to our outstanding town manager.
Not disagree with you.
Here, you take care of this because we can't agree amongst ourselves on how to do the work. What pettiness. I've, I've had it. I've had it.
Our strategic plan, nine out of 10 of the top items in our strategic plan have already been started because they are under the tutelage of our town manager. The one, the one and only thing that's under us is one thing that we cannot come to an agreement on. Petty and childish.
The one thing that's under us, you mean the council?
The six of us sitting here at the dais is the optimization of boards and committees. That lies on our shoulders, not on the town manager's shoulders as a driver.
You're only left with option two.
Three co-chairs. That's what the motion's on the table now.
I pull myself out.
Much as I hate to do it, I think this conversation is completely unproductive at this point. And if there are two council members who are interested in working together and want to talk further about this and we can all think about it at a reasonable hour, fine.
I don't want to leave here tonight without deciding how, if we're going to go forward on this process and how we're going to do it. We keep, we have been kicking this can down the road forever. And I frankly believe that there are members of this board who don't want to work on it at all. And so any delay tactics are to the benefit of not getting anything done. I'm like, let's pick two people who are willing to work on it and work on it.
So I've given you option two, which is everything you wanted. That's what you wanted, Bill.
I voted for it.
That's what others are willing to accept.
I voted for it.
So then...
Why is there a problem?
There isn't.
There is a problem.
The problem is we don't have enough shoulders, John. I work full-time. I would love to be involved in this. If I work with Councilman Kraft and myself, driving this, putting this together, we are going to fail. We need another set of shoulders. The mayor has offered her set of shoulders. She's invested a lot of time in this so far. It just seems that the three of us...
Well, who authored this document?
Always in the water.
Where did it come from?
Always in the water, together, working collaboratively.
Okay, so I like your option two. I'm saying I support it. It's like it didn't fall from the sky.
But then we need a motion. Mr. Chulo needs to withdraw, withdraw his option four. And someone needs to make a motion for option two. We select two members and we go on, if we're going to go on.
If ex officio. That doesn't mean I can't contribute, but I won't leave it. I sit on the CLUP steering committee. I sit on the rec board steering committee and I've made contributions to all of those. I appreciate your thoughts, Bob. And I personally don't disagree, but there are members of council who think that, want to argue that that is not reasonable. So I'm giving you what you want. And I'm happy to be ex officio and not be involved in the leadership of it at all. But that means that's placed on two members of council. And the last time this happened, that didn't go very well. So will you withdraw or amend?
I will withdraw.
Back to council for a motion.
I move to adopt option two.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor? Opposed? Are you abstaining? Did you raise your hand?
I voted.
I didn't see your hand, sorry. For which, opposed or...
Four. Four to one, vote.
Okay.
So before we leave tonight, I would like to establish who those two people are going to be. And I've heard, you know, I've heard a suggestion, but I don't want to force those people into doing something they don't want to do.
I'd be willing to give it a try and see how it goes.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
We seconded.
I seconded.
A second, a second nominee to win.
Oh, a second nominee, I'm sorry.
We're going with self.
I've said all along I'd do it.
So if that's satisfactory to council, it's Bob and Bill.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move, Madam Mayor.
Second? All in favor? Thank you, council, very much. There's a lot of work that got done tonight.
Sorry, Bob.